All right, good morning, everybody. On the order of the ready to schedule, Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, June 12, 2018, and ask if everyone please join the Board as we honor America with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, and good morning. What a beautiful day out there. We'll start this meeting as we start every meeting, and that is with public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address topics on today's agenda or really anything you would like. Anybody wishing to comment on something, please come on up. Come on, John. John, in his special role as just citizen today, give your comment.
Good morning. It's like a dream come true. I get to come to the supervisors and talk today.
Start by introducing yourself and your address.
I'm John Klaus. I live at 2167 Ashmore in Ames, Iowa. And there are two items on the agenda today that just pique my interest. The first one is the washman service that our county engineer will be presenting as a contract to do work pertaining to drainage districts and drainage ditch, open drainage ditches. And it's about keeping these ditches maintained in good condition, clear of obstructions, et cetera, et cetera. And I read the scope of services, and what struck me is, this would be a good full-time job for somebody with benefits and a decent public employee salary. So why are we contracting this out? Why are we bringing into our budget a profit element for a private company that will charge rates that are referred to as standard rates, which are not really clearly expressed? Wouldn't it be better, and I'm sure you'll have a chance to tell me why it would be better, but it seems to me that it might be better to have a full-time county employee, or maybe two, doing this workforce on a constant and continuous basis rather than having it contracted out?
True.
Okay. Second thing that strikes me as interesting is the proposed amendment to a contract with the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Division of the federal government. I didn't know we had a contract, let alone one that needed amendment. Just want to point out that Immigration and Customs Enforcement is a responsibility of a federal government, and under the Tenth Amendment, the federal government cannot commandeer local government to do its work. So I guess I would like to have a good explanation of what it is we're doing for the federal government and why. So that's what's on my mind today. I'll be listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to address us on any topic? All right, no minutes this week, so consideration of personnel actions as listed, Board.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Chief, I'm Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Claims, Board.
I would move that we pass as presented with the exception of the 4A Promotions Contract, which needs to be pulled separately. Legally, I still own the Ames Bulletin Board. We go through this every quarter. So I would move the rest of them as presented without 4A Promotions.
Second. Motion in the second for everything except the 4A Promotions claim. Olson.
Aye.
Chief. Sanders, aye. Now it's your turn. You're going to make the motion to pass the 4A Promotions claim.
I move approval of 4A.
It's the, it's a contract with, yeah, Story County.
And I'll second it. That's simply a company that's doing some advertising with a company that Morris still technically owns.
Technically, I own it.
Yep. Further discussion? Chief. Sanders, aye. Olson.
Apeye.
That's it for claims consent agenda, Board.
I guess based upon the question that was asked by Mr. Klaus, I would move that we ask that we amend that so that we pull out, is it item 10, I believe?
Yep, item 10.
Okay. We pull out item 10, consideration of amendment, but the rest be approved with one motion.
One motion?
Yes.
All right, so we lost the first motion that Marty made. Morris made a motion, Marty seconded it. That's where we are, consent agenda, but we're pulling number item 10 for discussion. Yes. Further discussion?
None.
Olson.
Aye.
Chief. Sanders, aye. Now we're consent agenda, item number 10. This is consideration of the contract between Story County and ICE. And there is nobody that I see here today that's qualified to speak to the questions that John has because it's our sheriff or our county attorney.
I did talk to Connie Torresdale about this. Would it be appropriate if I repeat the conversation we had?
Ask you to do it, which one?
Okay. I had called Connie to find out about this modification, and she let me know that this was actually a reduction in the rate for the money we get her prisoner when ICE has already arrested them or detained them illegally, gone through the detainer process. And then we sometimes house these prisoners until they are taken to another facility. That is the conversation I had with Connie Torresdale.
But we only, okay, so now we got to clarify this more. So we will only house an ICE detainee on two conditions. One, that detainee is brought, we don't facilitate collection of the detainee. That detainee is brought to us by ICE or some other agency, one. And two, there is a standing order from a judge, not paperwork, but a standing order from a judge for us to hold them. So, John, what I would say is, Story County is neither a sanctuary county, but nor is it a county that tries to go out and enforce what you rightly point out are federal laws. We do from time to time with our jail facility, hold prisoners from other entities, not just ICE. We'll hold for the FBI, we'll hold for other law enforcement entities that have the proper documentation, meaning an order from a judge for us to hold. Several years ago, Story County was one of those counties that said, "We're not going to hold just based on ICE paperwork without a judge as a worker to hold." So this is, I think, just a standard amendment to the contract up to the Board. I'm going to, regardless of what we do, John, I'm going to ask that Paul Fitzgerald reach out to you and talk you through where we are on this, but not doing anything new and sure not weighing in one way or another on immigration in the U.S. So are you saying we set this aside? I would prefer we go ahead and pass.
I would move that we go ahead and pass this. I just pulled it because it was a question.
All right, then is that a motion?
It is a motion that we approve, item X, consideration of amendment, a modification of contract between ICE and Story County.
Motion second. John, anything further from you before we take action here? I'll ask Sheriff Fitzgerald to reach out to you. Olson.
Aye.
Chief. Sanders, aye. It passes. All right, that takes care of consent agenda. Now we have the public hearing items, three of them today. First is discussion consideration of Resolution 18-107, Ames Urban Fringe Plan Framework Map Amendment that we're coming back to Timber Creek, which we dealt with a couple of months ago.
In February.
Good morning, Gary.
Good morning, Gary. Again, this time around, Story County Board of Supervisors is the applicant. It's Ames Urban Fringe Plan Land Use Framework Map Amendment from the Ag Farm Service designation to Rural Residential. It's about a 75-acre area currently known as Timber Creek Acres Plats 1 through 4. It's about a quarter mile south of Ames corporate limits. The western boundary of this property is the corporate limits of the city of Ames. We're in Section 23, Washington Township. Property owners are Dixon and Luanne Jensen. As Rick mentioned, this item, the actual residential parcel subdivision plats, 1 through 4, were before the Board of Supervisors the second time around, February 20th. At that same meeting, there was a concern about the land use designation. That's what's before the Board today. There was a concern that the land use designation wasn't in alignment, and with the Ag and Farm Service designation, there's a restriction that subdivision plats not be submitted for those areas. So again, zoning is A1 Agricultural District. The plats were determined to be consistent with the zoning requirements of the county. As I said, the current designation is Ag Farm Service. There is that restriction on not submitting subdivision plats in those areas. Looking at the land use, we've got four existing dwellings constructed from 1952 was the first one through 2001. There's actually a golf course on the north portion that was a part of a CUP, Conditional Use Permit, submittal that was submitted by the applicant to accommodate Iowa State University men's and women's golf teams for their practice facility. None of this property's in agricultural row crop production or livestock production. So when you look at the land use designation, the use of the property was proposed with that plat that was approved, actually four residential parcel subdivision plats, allowing the division of each one of the parcels that contained a dwelling to be divided once to create another parcel for a dwelling. And you look at the land use in this area, there's four single-family dwellings to the south. There's also five dwellings on the east side of Highway 69. It was determined to be appropriate to consider that change to Rural Residential. So this shows you the location of where we're at. We're south of Ames. As I said, the western boundary of this property is also the corporate limits of the city of Ames. Closer view, the plat 1 took up the western portion of this 75-acre area. The property owner's residence is in the western side. He was creating a new lot to the east side here, south of the main drive going in. Plat 2 is in the central, west-central portion. Plat 3 was the north side of the drive. It split out the house that was constructed in 1952. And then plat 4 was this area on the south side of the drive. The existing dwelling is here, and it created a new lot to the east for a new dwelling. So Rural Residential policies, again, it allows a density of one unit per acre. Full infrastructure is not required. We've got xeno rural water in this area. All the lots will have or do have onsite septic systems, propane gas, West Story Fire Department will serve the area, as well as Mary Greeley ambulance. Natural resources are to be preserved, and again, there's no prime farm ground. Action with the adjacent cities, the partners in Ames Urban Fringe Plan. City of Ames did approve the amendment on the 8th of May. City of Gilbert approved it May 21st. We did prepare and publish notice publication in the three papers designated by the Board of Supervisors on the 24th. We also sent notices to property owners within a quarter of a mile on the 25th, and we have received no responses with regard to this request. These next two maps are actually from the Ames Planning Housing Department. Shows you the proposed designated area. Again, it's 75 acres. Behind the cross that area is light green, which represents Ag Farm Service, and then the darker green is the natural areas. Those will be retained and not impacted. And then this would be the proposed change, which on my screen is yellow. That's the Rural Residential, and then of course, the natural areas that extend through it.
We're working on getting it where what you see on your screen is what we see on our screen.
Okay. We're at the site photos. This is the practice facility access. This is the house that was built in '52. It was a part of plat 3. This is the south side of the drive as you go in. That's a part of plat 4. The dwelling that is there. We're extending our driving to the west. This is a part of plat 1. This would be the area where a new dwelling would be constructed. This is the property owner's dwelling at the far west of that 75-acre area. This is part of plat 2, existing dwelling. And then to the east of that, this would be an area for the proposed dwelling. Access on Highway 69 and the drive looking north and looking to the south. And with that, that brings us to the recommendation. This was before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 6th. It was unanimous, 6 to 0, to recommend the land use change from agriculture farm service to Rural Residential for this acre, this area, which is determined, has been changed to Timber Creek Acres Plats 1 through 4. And again, the item before you is Resolution 18-107. And again, it does require approval of all three entities to make a change to the map. Do you have to answer your questions?
Questions before we go to the public hearing?
So you had a 6-0 vote on planning and zoning. Is there any discussion that had any pushback or anything from them that would give them loss?
Not that I recall. I think they see that, you know, this area has changed. It might have been Ag Farm Service at one time, but you know, these houses, except for the one that was built in '52, were both in the mid to late 90s, and there is no row crop production or livestock production. And so it's more fitting to change it to Rural Residential, which is consistent with the use of already there, what was proposed, and it fits in with the area.
I just had one, and since we are the actual applicant on this one, and we're voting also, I'm assuming legal, you talked to Ethan and you were similar with Jessica Moreno, just to be sure, it's okay for us vote? I know we have to, but it just is a little odd that we're also the applicant.
Well, and again, it was first before the plats were before the Board of Supervisors in October of 2017. It was approved then with the condition that the applicant seek the change, which he did, but he decided to add seven additional parcels. And so it was 11 parcels that he took before the City of Ames City Council, and they rejected that. And I think part of that is, you know, it was a large area to look at, and they knew that they were going to be going through their comprehensive planning update. So he came back again in February and requested approval again, because that, the first approval was conditioned upon the land use change. And so that's when the Board of Supervisors directed staff to seek the change.
But as far as, and Morris makes a good point, you know, it's not, it's not usual that we're both the applicant and the decider on one of those things. But what we did in for it all, similarly to here, when we saw something with our maps that weren't lining up with what the property had been when our maps came into existence, we took it upon ourselves to say, "This is the right thing to do here." That's how it came. Yes, Ethan has been a part of this all the way through, and so we're good to go. Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
None.
All right, we'll open the public hearing, see if there's anyone who would like to address Resolution 18-107. See, no one moving the microphone. We'll close the public hearing, turn to the Board for action.
Just a easy one. This is the straight board as it gets out of consideration of Resolution 18-107, the Urban Fringe Plan Land Use Framework Map Amendment located at Timber Creek Acres, Plats 1 through 4.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Further discussion? Gary, Ethan, close this out.
Nothing else.
Okay. Chief. Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Resolution 18-107 passes. Let's see here. Next item is discussion consideration of Resolution 18-108. Amazingly enough, Ames Urban Fringe Plan Land Use Framework Map Amendment. This one's located on 500, right over on County Line Road, just inside.
500 North Avenue. Applicant this time is Chuck Winkleblatt, Hansiker Companies. He's representing an individual who's interested in acquiring the two parcels, which comprises about 75 acres. It's a 33-acre parcel and a 41-acre parcel. We're about a mile north of Ames, on the east side of North 500th Avenue, Section 30, Franklin Township. The current designation for the south parcel is urban residential, requesting a change to Ag and Farm Service. The north parcel is Ag and Farm Service and natural areas to Rural Residential. And we'll show you that we think we have some issues with the mapping. It's not consistent with the actual land use.
Now stop for just a second. I thought I heard you say the southern was going through Ag Services, don't you mean it's, would be going through Rural Residential?
Yeah, it's going for Rural Residential. Yes, it's urban residential right now.
But we go to urban, and the other one, the northern portion, is Ag, and it would go to Rural Residential.
Yeah, the south one is urban residential, and they're proposing a Rural Residential.
And then I thought I heard you say taking it to Ag Service.
I may have said that, but... So the actual initial submittal was approved March 13, 2018 by the Board to accept the application. There is a house on the north parcel constructed in 1900, which is in somewhat rough shape. We'll get into the actual land use in a second here. Zoning is A1 Agricultural District. It is surrounded by A1 Agricultural District to the northeast and south. Boone County is on the west side of the road. Again, much of the north parcel is shown as natural areas, and part of it's creek and tree area, but the north part of that is row crop production. So there's an issue with that designation. The south portion is identified as urban residential, and according to the plan and the policies, these are areas that are supposed to be annexed first and developed under city standards. Our staff and Mr. Winkleblatt have had communication with the city, and there is no interest in extending water or sewer to this area in the short term or long term, or at least for the planning period, which is through 2030. And so they support the proposed use. And again, the request is to take the two parcels and create a total of four lots for four new dwellings. And again, the natural areas will be preserved and maintained. This shows you the area. Again, we're north of Ames corporate limits, about a mile, so we're right in this area. Closer view, again, you can see how the north parcel, the up the north half is actually in row crop production. South has the creek and tree area. On the south parcel, about the east, one half is tree, and the west portion is row crop production. We've got three dwellings on the south of this 75-acre area. There's a couple of houses on the west side of the street, and then we have a dwelling on a farmstead to the north. So as far as what could be permitted under the A1 district, both of these parcels are buildable. The north one, north parcel is 41 acres in an A1 district. The minimum lot size is 35 acres, so it's buildable. If that existing house were removed, we would issue a permit for a new house. It's also part of a farmstead. It meets the requirements for that, which means it could be split off with like a plat of survey. And then if the balance is 35 acres or greater, then they could obtain another permit for an additional dwelling. The south parcel is considered legally established, lot of record, plus it needs the land evaluation site assessment score, so it can accommodate a house in its current configuration of 33 acres. And then any subsequent divisions that would require a residential parcel subdivision to be submitted. So it's important to note, just like the other one, no additional lots could be created for housing under this A1 zoning district classification. So it would require a rezoning to make any changes or to add any additional homes. And so that would also involve the City of Gilbert and Ames in that review, in addition to the county. So the City of Gilbert did take action to approve the amendment, May 21st. It will be before the Ames City Council today. Publication were prepared in the three papers designated by the Board and published on the 24th of May. We did send notices to adjacent property owners within a quarter mile on the 25th of May. We did not receive any comments back, but we did have some comments when we first started this process to decide whether or not to accept the application. Concerned that no more than four lots be created for housing, and that the natural areas would be preserved, and that's a part of what they're planning. So again, policies allows, Rural Residential allows one unit per acre, and full infrastructure is not required in these areas. We've got xeno rural water. It will accommodate onsite septic, Midland Power co-ops in this area, this time Gilbert Fire Department, and then Mary Greeley. Natural areas are supposed to be preserved, and then there's a note of preserving prime farm ground. So this shows you the maps. These two maps are from the Ames Planning and Housing Department. You can see that the north parcel is primarily designated as natural areas, and again, the north half really is in row crops. And then there's a little portion of it in the northeast corner that is Ag and Farm Service. The area that's not natural areas is shown as urban residential, this little node right here. So this shows what's being proposed. Again, the natural areas would be retained and be protected. The request would be to change it to the Rural Residential, which is what's shown here, the north half, and then the area that's outside of the trees would be Rural Residential in that south parcel. This is kind of a concept map that was submitted by the applicant that shows the ultimate goal of creating two buildable lots on each parcel to allow four total houses. So site photos, this is looking north on the south parcel, looking to the east, south. This is at the access that's there, looking south on 500th Avenue, across the street, looking to the north. This is that house that's on that north parcel, again, was constructed in 1900. This is the common property line, again, for the north parcel, looking to southeast, south. Again, we're looking at the road right away to the south, across the road, and looking to the north. So the requested action, again, this item was before the Story County Planning and Zoning Commission on the 6th. They did approve this unanimously, 6 to 0, supporting the change from the urban residential to the Rural Residential for the south parcel, and on the north parcel, Ag Farm Service and natural areas to Rural Residential. This is Resolution 18-108. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Questions for Gary before we open the public hearing?
I have none.
I believe we've had a chance to look at this and slowly walk it into the point where everybody under the Ames City Council has looked at it and kind of made peace with it, so.
Yeah, Ames Planning and Zoning Commission did it for the amendment.
Sure, and for me, if you're truly interested in protecting these natural areas, this is the best way to protect them long-term, and hopefully it would be a great, a great project for four new homes in Story County. So with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address 18-108. Chuck, you've got any words of wisdom for us?
I don't think you have questions.
Okay. Anybody wishing to address 18-108? See, no one moving the microphone. I'll close the public hearing, turn to the Board for action.
I would move Resolution 18-108, Ames Urban Fringe Plan Land Use Framework Map Amendments located at 355 Ford, North 500th Avenue, and Parcel 05-30-300-305.
I was having that. You sure you don't want to repeat the whole thing?
Oh, no.
Not at all. Any further discussion? Olson.
Aye.
Chief. Sanders, aye. 18-108 passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next public hearing item is first consideration and possibly only consideration, we'll see, ordinance 272 amending certain boundaries of the official Story County zoning map. This is dealing with Landis down near Collins.
Correct, correct. So this is a rezoning request, as you said, from Landis Cooperative. The property location is 69866 Highway 210, which is in Section 29 on Collins Township. A little bit of background on this request. The Board of Supervisors, yourselves, did approve a site development plan and zoning permit for a grain processing facility a quarter mile south of the city of quarter mile south of the city of Collins on March 20th of this year. Shortly thereafter, the existing parcel was expanded by 150 feet to the west and 150 feet to the south, which created the existing parcel C. The purpose of this rezoning is to be able to move the previously approved scale south into that new 150 feet of the parcel. So the request is just to rezone approximately six acres along the western edge and the southern edge of the property. So the rezoning request is from A1 Agricultural District to the A2 Agribusiness District. We do have a C2C Future Land Use Map Amendment from the Agricultural Conservation Area to the Commercial Industrial Area. Again, it's about six acres which are being requested to be rezoned. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval at the June 6 meeting. There's about a six to zero on this item. So just looking at the vicinity map, we're just in Collins Township, just a quarter mile south of the city of Collins corporate limits. This is a plat of survey which was recently recorded. The original parcel was located here and it was expanded by 150 feet to the west into the south. So the rezoning request area is just this L-shaped piece surrounding the site. So this is just a site development plan that was approved by the Board of Supervisors. You can see this is Highway 65 here, Highway 210 here. There are grain bins currently being constructed along the eastern edge, the existing flat storage. Again, the purpose of the rezoning is to be able to move this scale south into that 150-foot area to improve circulation on the site. Landis would like to provide a bypass lane for the scale so that not all of the trucks have to wait for the scale to be used. So the A2 Agribusiness Statement of Intent is designed to provide for activities strongly related to agricultural uses and must be therefore located in agricultural areas. There is a requirement for rezoning from the A1 or the A2 district to another district that the land evaluation site assessment score is less than 267. This site was calculated at 265, so that meets that requirement. Here's a zoning map. The existing zoning, again, is A2 for a majority of the site. They would like to extend that to the full extent of the property. The Commercial Industrial Area Designation in the C2C Future Land Use Map does support the long-term planning objective of accommodating future demand for types of commercial and industrial growth that may best be located in a rural setting outside of an urbanized area at which we feel this grain processing facility fits. This is the current Future Land Use Map. This is the Commercial Industrial Area. Again, they're just proposing to extend this 150 feet along the western edge and the southern edge. There are some rural residential areas, about five dwellings, and the remainder of the area is agricultural conservation. Here are some site photos. This is looking south from Highway 210 at the site access. The western rezoning area would be here. This is looking west to the area to be rezoned. This area is primarily in row crops right now and it will remain primarily in row crops. They're just, they have just removed the area that they need for the scale from row crops, so it's just a small area being removed. This is looking south at the rezoning area. This is some of the construction happening on the site. Just in the past few months, there's been a lot of activity on the site, so it's pretty interesting to see. And these are the grain bins that are being built. This is looking west along Highway 210 from the access point to the property. This is looking along, east along Highway 210. This is at the intersection of Highway 65 and 210, looking south, looking east across Highway 65, and then looking north. So the rezoning standards of approval, the proposed rezoning shall conform to the Story County Development Plan or the C2C Plan. We believe that the A2, or the request is consistent with the plan. The A2 district is compatible with the Agricultural Conservation Area and the Commercial Industrial Area as is indicated in our C2C Plan, so we believe that this fits. The proposed rezoning shall conform to the Statement of Intent for the proposed district and district requirements. Again, the grain processing facility is strongly related to agriculture and is best located in a rural setting. The proposed rezoning shall be compatible with surrounding land uses and development patterns. Over 93% of the land within a half mile of the subject property is used for agricultural purposes, purposes is highly productive. It's anticipated that this area will remain primarily agricultural due to its agricultural conservation designation on the C2C Future Land Use Map. This standard for approval has to do with natural areas being designated on the site. There is not any on this property, so we said this standard was not applicable. And then the final standard is, has to do with that lease score being lower than 267 and we calculated it at 265, so it fits. Future Land Use Map Amendments, if you have any specific questions, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things on this. If you have any specific questions on the standards, feel free to ask, but whether or not, one standard I wanted to highlight is whether or not the change is needed to allow reasonable development of the site. Again, the request to change is to allow Landis to move that previously approved scale to the south in order to better accommodate onsite traffic and minimize the potential for backups. The relationship of the proposed amendment to the supply and demand for particular land uses within the county and immediate vicinity of the site. The grain processing facility is existing on the site. It's been approved. Landis is just currently expanding its operations and would like to optimize circulation. Consideration of the fiscal impacts of the proposed amendment to the Story County. Highway 210 and US Highway 65 are existing paved roads. There will be, there's no anticipated fiscal impacts to Story County. We did route this request for interagency review. Environmental Health did issue a permit for a septic system onsite for the proposed office building. The assessor said that the additional acres will be valued as excess commercial acres for the 2019 assessment. We did do a notice of public hearing publication in the three county designated newspapers on May 31st. We also sent public notice letters to property owners within a quarter mile of the site on May 25th. We have not received any comments from the public. The application materials were also routed to the city of Collins and we did not receive any comments from the city either. So with a rezoning request, there is an opportunity to add conditions to the approval. Story County Planning and Development staff are not recommending any conditions on this request. So the Story County Planning and Development's staff's recommendation that the proposed rezoning from the A1 Agricultural District to the A2 Agribusiness District and the C2C Future Land Use Map Amendment from the Agricultural Conservation Area to the Commercial Industrial Area be approved. Staff is also recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve this request on the first consideration, waiving the second and third considerations, allowing Landis to maintain their existing construction schedule. And there's a few points we just wanted to point out. Additional land is needed for further expansion of the existing property to provide space for a proposed scale and to improve onsite circulation. The grain processing facility is interrelated to agriculture and that is a part of the Story County Land Development Regulations. The proposed rezoning conforms to the C2C Comprehensive Plan. The proposed use conforms to the Statement of Intent and the regulations of the A2 Agribusiness District. Just a small portion, again, of the land is being taken out of row crop production. The proposed use will conform with the surrounding land use and Planning and Development staff have not received any comments from the general public on this request. So again, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval and with that, the Board of Supervisors may take action. Again, staff is recommending approval without conditions and that the Board of Supervisors approve it on first consideration, waiving second and third consideration. Any questions?
Questions?
None.
All right, so we're just dealing with ordinance 272 right now, right? Or are we dealing with both 272 and Resolution 1811?
They both need action.
They both need action. I'm debating whether we open a public hearing one for both. Do you want to spend just a second on 1811 and then we'll open the public hearing for both? So 1811 just comes back and passes the resolution necessary if we pass this ordinance?
Sure, so the ordinance is for the rezoning request and the resolution is for the C2C Future Land Use Map Amendment.
Okay.
So they're pretty interrelated.
Okay.
And again, it's just for that 150 feet to the west and to the south.
Perfect. Any questions there?
None.
Any objection if I open the public hearing for both items and then we'll deal with both items in one.
None.
All right, well, public hearing for ordinance 272 as presented and Resolution 1811 as just mentioned.
And I would note that Roger from Landis is here if you have any questions for him back there.
Okay. Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address us, please come on up. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and turn, we're dealing with ordinance 272 first. The recommendation is approval by staff is approval and waiving second and third reading.
I would make that motion that we approve as presented and waive second and third considerations.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
None.
Olson?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. That passes ordinance 272 and waives second and third reading making ordinance 272 adopted. Now let's deal with Resolution 1811.
I'll move Resolution 1811 as presented.
Okay. Motion and a second, further discussion?
None.
Olson?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Resolution 1811 passed. Good job, everyone. Thank you.
That was very clear. Thank you for walking us through that.
That takes care of public hearing items. Now we're to additional items, discussion and consideration with the Dakota Access Pipeline regarding county inspection and discussion planners really not with Dakota Access, this is with ISG who's been serving the role of being our onsite engineer during the construction process. Derek, you want to start the introductions? Morning, Derek.
Sure.
Morning.
Morning. Like I said, for the most part, I'm going to turn it over to Evan to give a little background on what they did and then an update on where we stand with the inspections and getting the documents turned over to county. But we had some owners come in, was that two weeks ago or one week ago? I've listened to those audio recordings, I believe Evan had as well, so hopefully he can address some of those concerns. As far as the county goes, I did have just a handful of complaints that came through during the whole process and we tried to address them the best we could or get them passed on to ISG so they could make sure they're being taken care of. So hopefully some of their documents will show how they were taken care of. So I will turn it over to Evan and kind of give us an update on landowner complaints and where we stand with the final, turning over to the documents.
Outstanding. Evan, welcome. Start by introducing yourself and your role with ISG and how that relates to Story County.
My name is Evan Delvalle, project manager with ISG for the county inspection on the Dakota Access Pipeline project. The one clarification I wanted to make on what Darren said is we're not here to turn over documents yet. The project is still very much ongoing. We have inspectors in the field as we're sitting here today. So I want to give you a quick update on what we have to date and then make some comments on what occurred two weeks ago and answer any questions that you guys have. So as I said, we currently have four full-time inspectors taking care of outstanding punch list items that we've documented as well as items that the pipeline contractors did not address in the previous construction season. During that May 29th meeting, I believe, there was some comments made rather explicitly or implicitly that ISG was in neglect of their contract. I very much disagree with that sentiment. And I wanted to just point out some background on our background and why that's possible is these are the documents for Story County specifically on our inspection reports for Story County. Story County is one of 13 counties we're inspecting for. It's nine miles out of the total 263 that we have, which is about 5%. And these are the documents purely for Story County. That covers two-plus years of construction inspection, so I just wanted to get on record as saying ISG has been out there fulfilling our contract to the best that we understand it. If there are concerns that the county has with what we're doing, we're always open to conversations and addressing those.
So Evan, let's just deal with that right up top. I don't think there was ever an intent by anybody up here to make a statement that ISG wasn't fulfilling their contract. I took it more as a question and in fact, you and I discussed that while we were going.
Right.
Am I stating that correctly? I mean, you didn't intend to.
No, I'm a journalist. That's okay. Alleged is a word that I throw out too.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to address that. My concern is, I mean, the landowners were out there to take care of their property, but we were hired by this body and I want to make sure that we're fulfilling the obligations that we said we would for that. So that's really the update that we have for the project. I'm really going to open it up to questions that you guys had from that previous presentation. I don't have anything specific.
Sure.
I'm not going to go line by line on what was talked about there, but if there are outstanding items from that previous presentation that you would like us to address, project manager and then the project chief, Cole Kuzenga, is with me as well.
Yeah, and so one thing for me, Evan, take us through, so ISG has been following the construction of this and the closed-out construction of this and you got your punch list of items that didn't happen exactly like we wanted them to happen, need to be rectified, didn't get done, those kinds of things. So understand that, but take me through when a landowner has a concern and that concern is routed to you guys. Just generically, talk me through what happens when you get a concern like that that's not part of any punch list that you currently have.
There's a number of ways that that goes. A lot of it depends on the severity of the issue, but the most common way is that the landowner contacts either myself or Cole and then one of our inspectors, Cole being the main one, will go out to the site, walk the property with the landowner. If we can reasonably attribute that issue to construction, that gets put on our punch list. Now, we're not in charge of the construction schedule, we're not in charge of timing, we're not in charge of their crews, so we get that on our punch list, communicate that with the pipeline so that they understand that before we close out the project, this needs to be addressed per the ag mitigation plan, Iowa code, or any specific landowner agreement made with Dakota Access.
So if I can ask this in a different fashion, if one of your inspectors is out there and seeing that, or say a mixing of soil levels, your inspector was or was not authorized to stop that?
In terms of mixing of soils, if that was something that we identified, we absolutely stopped it every time. We had the authority to stop work at that location, not the entire project, but at that location to address mixing. Now, some of the concern is going to be the understanding of topsoil and that there's some subjectivity to that from the contractor's perspective, from the landowner's perspective, and from the inspector perspective. What was utilized across the entire project was a topsoil survey that was completed by a qualified soil scientist and his group along the entire route. So what we did is we tried to negate the subjectivity of topsoil depths and put it onto something scientifically proven and measured. So that's where some of those, some of those issues come in is the landowner who believes he's got three feet of topsoil and this soil survey says you have 16 inches. Well, there's a big difference between those two. That has caused some concern on landowner's part, but that's where that goes. But I'm sorry, that was a rambling answer to your question of yes, we could stop that.
Actually, it was a good answer. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, because then it brought up a follow-up and that has to do with, you know, those documentaries that you documents that you have, that if a landowner had a disagreement with the layers or how you were.
Yep.
Would that show up as a notation in your book for that particular segment?
If our inspector interacted with the landowner, for the most part, yes, they were documenting those interactions stating what was going on. Really, these are a document of what the day's activities were and how the inspector interacted on that parcel. Landowner disagreements don't necessarily dictate how we inspect. Iowa code dictates how we inspect. The mitigation plan dictates how we inspect, but we always took into consideration the landowner's concerns, so.
It seemed obvious that what we presented with was a narrative from Webster and West story county.
Mm-hmm.
That it would say, it said to me, because they were hoping to have a curve using a drone as far as getting aerial footage, that I know there was a production schedule for the pipeline that was going to be adhered to as best as possible. Clearly, they were doing some construction in extreme wet conditions, but it looked just visually on a gross observation that the return of the parent soils was not, I believe there was contractual obligation to place it back where it was found and return it. It did not look like that was done, not necessarily in Story County, but in county's contiguous sets.
I would argue that that was not done correctly. I think that, again, there's some subjectivity to those various horizons of soil. And the Iowa code clearly differentiates between topsoil and subsoil. We had no authority to do anything with the various subsoil horizons. So topsoil was stripped, stockpiled separately, separated from the subsols. Subsols were taken to whatever depth that they needed to, to place the pipe. The reverse was done as they filled in the trench line with the subsols going in first, then it was ripped to help with compaction and then the topsoils were replaced. So.
Was there a contractual obligation on the wetness of soils for doing construction work?
There is if the topsoil is still present. There's two items that are in consideration for work in wet conditions. That's if topsoil is present because you can get rutting, which will mix your topsoil and your subsoil, which is a violation of the mitigation plan. And then there's considerations for subsoil or sub-ground tile lines and the impact to those. The topsoil is a relatively easy one to document. If they strip it, they're relieving their concern with mixing of those two. The underground tile lines, we had no way to verify without digging up those tile lines whether or not they were impacted by construction. And on top of that, they had to be inspected before the topsoil was put back anyway. So we did not stop projects, we did not stop the project in wet conditions for tile line considerations because it was going to be addressed eventually anyway. So with regards to mixing, they stripped not only the ditch line and the working right away, they stripped the entire easement that they had, their 150-plus feet of topsoil so that they could work.
So yeah, and so I think an important point here, I underscore from a lot of what we heard two weeks ago and today, a lot of what we heard two weeks ago involved mixing of the subsols and dealing with clay coming up within the subsols. And what I just heard you say is, there's nowhere in the code, there's nowhere in your contract, it talks about worrying about any mixture of the subsols. So it could in fact have happened just like the people here two weeks ago said, but it's not part of the contract, there's not any code that addresses that.
The county inspector has no authority to mandate that they do anything with the subsols beyond stockpiling them separate from the topsoil.
So what clarity say, once the topsoil has been removed, the easement, whatever construction can take place, how would you say?
For 98% of the time, yes. There were instances where the.
Conditions irrelevant?
Yes, conditions irrelevant.
Okay.
But there were situations where we did ask them to stop in wet conditions because it was just so wet. But those are few and far between because again, our authority is limited to what the code and the mitigation plan gave us.
One of the things that came out was the fact that you see tile lines, known and unknown, were breached and some of the visuals they provided us showed some pretty less industry standard fixes. I mean, what is your story in that respect? And I would speak more on the Story County side of things.
I can't speak, Cole, this may be one for you. I can't speak to the specific pictures that they gave. Our tile line reports are here, so we had.
Those have photos.
They do have photos. They have photos, they have survey shots on them. The location of all of that has been taken. From the best of my understanding, all of the tile repairs were fixed per the requirements, again, within the code, which were developed per the standards of tile repair.
So the landowner today believes that they have a tile line that has been not returned to the level of what's prior to the construction. They still have the opportunity to reach out to ISG?
They do. One of the gentlemen that we actually was presenting here contacted us. We got it onto our punch list because we agreed that the fix for that was inadequate. He was less than accommodating for us to come and fix that. But yes, they, we are, the part that was lost at that meeting was I wish that it would have been explained to landowners that we are still very much active on this project. And litigation is not going to get the fields put back together. It's going to be working with the county inspection to communicate that to the contractors to get that put back together. And so to answer your question, a landowner that has a concern with their tile lines, we are very much available to come take a look at it. And again, if we can attribute an issue to the construction of the pipeline, it'll get on our punch list, which will be communicated to the contractors.
I just wanted to make notes as you talked about, you know, the various avenues of address, that actually, I think I informed Supervisor Sanders, but I didn't have time to tell our supervisors. Chitty, but actually you, I, and our civil council are meeting sometime next week to talk a little bit about the contract so I can help, I can understand it better and understand what it calls for and not calls for for edification in my own mind.
Okay.
Really, I appreciate.
Yep.
So now that said, and then moving forward here on it, do you, in your times when you were contacted by landowners, were a lot of them, did you find there were situations where the landowner did not understand what the contract and code called for? In other words, the contract between the county and your company and then what the code called for? Did you feel there were a lot of those?
Early on in the project, I think there was some education on what we could and couldn't mandate the contractor to do. A lot of that was dealing with the topsoil. But no, for the most part, landowners are concerned with getting their property put back together. So they've, it's a pretty straightforward process in that they tell us what issues they're having that they didn't experience before the pipeline was there. We come out, we investigate, and we try to mitigate that, working with the contractors to get those taken care of. So I don't, to be honest, I don't think the landowners in the most part really care what the code says, they just want their land put back together.
Yeah, and let's be clear here, this whole internal relationship between Story County's contract with ISG and ISG's relationship to the Iowa code into which do, Iowa code is what drives what ISG is doing in this project. Just like if, Story County could have chosen not to enter into the contract, anybody and asked our county engineer to staff up or figure it out and Darren, you could have been responsible for all of this. We thought then and I think now, that would have been a bad decision. It would have been a bad use of resources. And so we went out and we looked for a third party to be able to fulfill our code responsibilities, right?
Yep.
What the Iowa code tells us are responsible. And in the contract between us and ISG, and I'm oversimplifying here, but it basically says you're going to serve as our representative and fulfill the requirements as Iowa code lays out.
I don't think that's oversimplification, I think that's the entirety of it. There's, you know, we get lumped with Dakota Access on a regular basis. ISG and the other county inspection companies are the only independent inspection team on this entire project. We were not hired by Dakota Access, we can't be fired by Dakota Access, we were hired by the individual counties, in this case, Story County, to represent them and their landowners in the field during this project.
Thank you for that.
Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I'm looking a little, I am, we'll probably talk about during our little meeting, is how the money actually came from Dakota Access, but it passed through us. So I think Ethan will help me understand at what point we could have said, no, we're not going to pay for this because we feel that we're not being represented. But that's a whole different conversation. I want to stay focused here on what happened with the landowners, what's happening with the soil and the mitigation process. That's what we're here for today for, correct?
Yeah, we're here to get an update and I think we got that. So do we have other questions? Is there somewhere you're not clear in what's happening with the soil mitigation? Is there some other question about the process that you have now?
About the process itself with the soil mitigation? I'd like to get an estimated timeline about when you feel those punch lists are done and therefore all the documents will be available for us to go over.
Well, and that's, it's an important point to keep in mind that we don't control schedule. We are inspecting the work being done by somebody that's completely unaffiliated with ISG. So I don't have an answer to that question. I'm a little surprised that we're sitting here now still talking about having inspection going on because I think most people expected that to have been done last year. But the mitigation plan is very clear on what needs to be done in the state of Iowa for a hazardous liquid pipeline to go in and it has not been met to date. So there are still items going on. It'll go on until those are met. You won't see me here saying, here are your documents, we recommend you close the project until our punch list is done and we can reasonably state that there are no other issues that we've witnessed attributed to this, to this project.
Yeah, and so to be clear in the biggie back, and Evan, if I misstate this, tell me, but I believe it was our expectation that all of this was going to be, as we went into planning season this year, we were going to be wrapping up the punch list items, it was going to get taken care of, and we would be finishing our work and forwarding on to the utilities board at this point, or maybe a little earlier, maybe in the spring. And what we found is no, like a lot of things, it's going to take longer. Now I'm to the point that I'm expecting it's at harvest time that we're finally going to get near the end of this thing. I may be missing on that.
I've said to the auditors, because I've now given them three budget amendments for the projection, I said, I'm done projecting out when this is going to be done because I'm 0-for-3 on it. So I will, I will let you know the minute that it's done and schedule a time to come back here and hand over our documents. But up until then, to go back to the contractual, we have not met our contract to date to finish this project out and we're not going to stop until we have done that, so.
Right. And again, you mentioned the whole idea of payment and the way it all works, let's just be real clear about that. The contract is between Story County and ISG. Story County is responsible for paying ISG for the work they're doing in the field. Now, separate from that, there's an agreement, well, there's a mandate that Dakota Access is going to reimburse the county.
Yep.
And we made a deal with ISG that says, ISG, well, we're not going to do the whole reimbursement thing, we're going to wait until we get our money from Dakota Access before we pay ISG. And ISG agreed to that in their contract with Story, it was just holding Story County harvest is the way we negotiated that. But there's no interrelationship at all between we still owe ISG the money even if Dakota Access didn't pay us. We just have agreed that we're not going to pay.
Yeah.
I mean, if Dakota Access were to slip off somewhere, then it'd be an interesting conversation. But there's not that interrelationship where you're somehow related to the payment of Dakota Access.
No.
Well, it's more of a theoretical kind of going back and saying, if Dakota Access was not reimbursing the county entirely, how might decisions have been made and looking at, would we have brought someone on into secondary roads? And I understand that was before I came on, but since Darren's department, Darren, would have been responsible for the inspections instead, right? So there were different, there were different ways to look at that. I'm just asking to track.
Can I make one statement to that point? We had at one point nearly 40 inspectors working 10 to 12 hours a day, seven days a week for three and a half months straight, without time off. That's not a, hey, you've earned a week off, go get, literally in the fields, sunup to sundown for three and a half straight months. So I get the idea that maybe there's a little clear separation if your county staff did that, but you could have hired any engineering firm to do this. You didn't have to hire ISG. Dakota Access didn't put ISG in front of you to say, hey, we like these guys, you hire them.
Right.
We gave you a proposal as if we were going to be working on a roadway project for you or drainage ditch watchman services, any of those. We put a proposal in front of you and said, this is what we can do for you and you chose us, so.
Sure, but, and this is not really related to you, it's just as the comment was made by Supervisor Sanders.
Okay.
Okay. So if after you had observed on one of our strike coming land, the section, and everything seemed to be fine at the time, but a landowner comes back to you afterwards then and says something that, say, one thing that was discussed was they didn't hump over enough, it's sort of a compaction issue. Okay. And so then you still are able to go back to Dakota Access, correct?
Absolutely. We've maintained communication so that we can pass this information on. I have a few numbers here. So in the, in Story County, we have 683 reports that have been completed in Story County. We have 42 items in Story County that have been included on our punch list. Only four of those remain open to date. There were 11 notice of violations that were identified during the placement of the pipeline, not part of the construction. We didn't inspect the actual pipeline itself, we did the ag materials around it. But 11 of those, we documented notice of violations for. There are none of those outstanding because they've been addressed either through mitigation in the field or through an agreement between the pipeline and the landowner.
Okay.
And within the state, or within Story County, again, landowners do have final say on their property for what they, what their expectation is outside of the mitigation plan. There are 55 individual landowner agreements that were made between landowners in Story County and the pipeline to say, I'll take my property the way it is, which takes it out of our hands as to what we can, we can require.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to follow up on what Laura's just said, it is still possible for a punch list item to get added.
It is.
In Story County, if somebody, somebody moves out of their field tomorrow and they see something that they think is attributable to the pipeline destruction, they can reach out and if you go out and find that, yeah, you agree something, it could, we could see additional punch list items.
Ten in due on a regular basis. You know, I mean, as we have wet conditions, we're seeing more and more tile things pop up. Some of those are not attributed to the pipeline, some of those are just degraded pipeline, or degraded tile lines that have been there historically. Other ones are attributable to the pipeline. We get those on our punch list, we notify Dakota Access and their contractors to get them on, and we keep following up with it, so.
And then once we certify that, what we do, we have some role.
So we're going to, ultimately, we're going to receive 100% of the materials that ISG has worked on as a place in Story County, a recommendation from ISG, then we go ahead and close out the project. And then once we do that, 100% of our materials will go down to IUB for IUB to take final action with Dakota Access. Am I stating that correct?
I'm going to leave that up to your county attorney to give you that. My understanding of the process is that it's this board that comes to the final conclusion that the project is complete within Story County. And then at that point, the inspection is done there, there's a 90-day wait period, and this is one of the, one of the things that I would contend was incorrect information given to you two weeks ago, is there's a 90-day wait period. After that 90 days, then the county compensation board process can be in place if other issues arise. So, but again, you.
That is where I was headed.
Yep. Your county attorney is going to give you the best answer for that. I have reached out to ISAC's attorney so that we can try to get something statewide so that all counties have the same information. I'm an engineer, I'm not an attorney. I don't pretend to play one, so I try to stay out of those conversations.
Perfect. Other questions?
Do you have any question? In the sense that on a rule of basis, this is still, your services are still available to a landowner that had the pipeline pass through them today?
Absolutely. Yep.
Within the last two weeks, I've talked to two Story County landowners and then onsite. So absolutely, they're added to the punch list. I believe the last one I met with, he doesn't want anything done until fall.
Right.
That may be a contract with his tile guy that Dakota Access reimburses him for. Either way, we see those agreements, once we see those signed agreements, we take that punch list item.
One of the hardships that was articulated several weeks ago is the fact that I believe Dakota Access contracted with a tile provider.
Mm-hmm.
And that they're scheduling and taking them into southern Iowa and they were not going to return for many months. Or is a landowner bound by that contract or can.
Or is, is a landowner bound by that contract, or can they, you can speak to this?
There, there have been, so negotiations between the landowner and the pipeline, we're not involved in those, but there have been countless examples of where landowners have told Dakota Access they prefer that their own tile people do the work. Dakota Access just asks for a cost estimate on that work, gives the approval, and then the landowner has the ability to go out, get that work done, and gets reimbursed by the pipeline for that, or the pipeline pays it directly. So, yeah, I would say more often than not, in a lot of, a lot of those cases.
That's a position where they have a tile that they was directly failing because the pipeline should be talking with their provider, but should that have any contact with you?
Should talk with us originally. We need, we, we are the best way of getting that in front of the, the pipeline, to make sure, because we, we do have some authority to, to keep this project going. We're not going to, we're not going to recommend it's done until all of our punch list items are, are off. So the landowner needs to, needs to get ahold of us, because we can help that process. But ultimately, it's going to be a, an agreement between the landowner and the pipeline.
And I just want to underscore that, because I heard you say something earlier that, that kind of resonated with me. I think you, I think you said 55, I think you said there were 55 landowners in Story County.
Yes.
That have, that have gone ahead and reached an agreement with Dakota Access and said, okay, we agree that we're done. And, and that takes ISG out of it now, because the landowner and the pipeline have agreed, yeah, everything's fine, is not fine.
Yeah, but those could, not necessarily, those can be separate agreements, it can be an agreement on abandoned tile. We could tell the tile wasn't functional, you know, it was sediment filled. So they signed an agreement to say, hey, we understand that is, that tile is fine, be abandoned. So those agreements can be wide variety of things. It's not saying we absolve you of everything you've done, we're, not necessarily.
Yeah, there, there are specific components of the restoration plan that they're signing off on.
Marty, when, when I do meet with a landowner, usually I get a pretty good idea if he's willing to wait for the contractor to come, or if he's more interested in waiting till fall, or having his guy do it in general. And I put them in contact with the right-of-way specialist for.
Okay, well, that's good, because the way we were represented several weeks ago was that latitude or the availability of non-designed contractor wasn't there.
You gotta, you gotta want them to kind of affect that, to, so.
I had a question back for Darren. Darren, as you started, so you said that there were a couple of instances where you got the call, or, or that you were able to take care of it, or, or, did you still at ISG know about that, or were these just questions in general that you?
Oh, yeah, definitely, they were, ISG was involved.
Okay.
It was the only one I had to go out, there was, Marty was involved with this one, was working in wet conditions, and we had to go out and make sure they were stopped, and they stopped for the day.
It was a wet year, and kind of painfully obvious, and it looked like, I don't know how these equipments moving about, but it was.
But most of the other ones were just mainly relayed to ISG to make sure they took care of the concern.
And then was an ISG inspector on site at all times in Story County? You said 40 of them, so I'm envisioning them literally being there any time that there was work being done.
Well, it's important to, to remember that there are certain construction elements that we are not inspecting. So placing the pipe, dropping it into the, into the ditch, welding, coating, none, none of that is inspectable by the county inspection team. So I, I heard landowners say that they were talking to foremen, and they've never seen an inspector out there. I, I don't, that's, it would need to be understood what that foreman was, was seeing. If it was a welding foreman, then yeah, he, he would never interact with us. But I, I can't say 100%, we were at every square foot of inspection that needed to be done, but we had people up and down the spread all the time. So we, we got calls from landowners saying, hey, there's somebody here, and we got there as soon as we could. 40 inspectors is a lot, it probably did not cover every foot of it all the time, but I feel very confident that we addressed every foot of right-of-way along here at some point.
I appreciate that, I appreciate playing out about there being different types of work done, and you had no ability to, to provide input on that.
Yep.
Any other questions, Karen? I appreciate you coming to do this. So Darren, thanks for facilitating this. Just when we came out of two weeks ago, I, I said, Darren, okay, let's get, let's get ISG in here to talk about this from a 30,000-foot level overview. Sure appreciate you guys coming in and talking to us this morning.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity, too. There was a, a little concern on my part after listening to that, so I appreciate the opportunity to give our perspective.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Okay, I'll be in next week sometime, too.
All right, next, coincidentally, since Evan just mentioned, is discussion and consideration of Drainage District Watchman Services proposal from Bolton-Mink. And Darren, so I'm a little confused about this on our agenda today, because our role of Drainage District trustees is different than our role as board supervisors. So just take me through what your expectation is for our conversation this morning.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know if you want to address the actual approval of the proposal, if you'd said go that route, as trustees or board. That's a question for you or the county attorney. But you had asked me to review the proposal and bring it back at some point to the board with my recommendations, so that, that's what I'm doing today. Whether you approve this as trustees or board, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I said, let's, let's go through how we got here. So really spurred by the retirement of Dave Toot, who has been our longtime tile services person in the county engineer's office, we had a conversation about, okay, how, what does this program need to look like going forward? So Dave had, they, they had multiple attributes that were really admirable, working in that role, but really had a great memory for the areas he had worked on, and understanding for the history of Story County and how the tiles work, and he had the ability that when Dave Toot walked on site, whoever the landowner was, they were relaxed because Dave Toot was here and he was going to take care of it. And so him, him retiring had really opened a, a door for us to take a look at, okay, we don't have that from Dave Toot anymore, now what are we going to do? And so, I believe a couple of weeks ago, we had a Drainage District trustee meeting immediately before a board supervisor meeting, and we heard a watchman services proposal from Bolton-Mink, which is who we use for our major drainage district work. And then I also put that on our board of supervisors' agenda, because I felt like it was important for full transparency, that we, even though it's not in our role as board supervisors, that we have full transparency that we're having this conversation as Drainage District trustees, and people seem to pay more attention to our board supervisor meetings than they do our Drainage District trustee meetings. But I think this, this item resides squarely with the Drainage District trustees, because that's who, it's Drainage Districts that are going to be paying the bill for any of this. So what I would ask us to do is have the full conversation here today, but if we are going to take any action, I believe it's as Drainage District trustees, and so we'd have to get a meeting scheduled to do that. Marty, Laura, is any questions or concerns about that?
Well, I said there, in taking life of the fact that in the discussion we had on this, we had Art Griner speak to us, why we should do this. This morning, we had John Hall speak to us, why we should be looking at.
Rouse.
Or Tom Rouse, I'm sorry. I got a lot of tons in my life. Why we should be looking to put additional county staff on. So I mean, clearly, we have a varietal approach on this one. Darren, I guess that, you know, you provided us the information here through Bolton-Mink, and I want to be educated on what direction to go. I, I believe that, I didn't think we were going to have the ability to replace Dave Toot, and I suspect a moment, but we did a very good job in hiring this week, bringing somebody on, and Nick Harich, who has a lot of similar.
He does.
Skill set, and we, I don't know if we'll ever get to Dave Toot level, but I think that we did something in our favor that would give me hope that we can get to a point where we can push it off into his world, and he can go out and do it on our behalf, that which we took our grant for too long.
And as I kind of recall, is that we had asked that the proposal be sent, the Bolton-Mink, original proposal be sent to Legal to take a look at it, and then I had emphasized very strongly that I would like to see quotes from two other entities, because I'm concerned that Bolton-Mink will likely be doing the engineering projects on anything that is found, and I, I would like at least the appearance of separation that we went out beyond Bolton-Mink to determine what else was available. And I believe I made a statement about leave it to secondary roads if we get to that point, because all we did is ask for a proposal to be brought back to us cleared by Legal. That's, I think that's really where we left it. But that, that was that, too. So I'll just weigh that in, but otherwise, I think that was pretty much the recap of the whole discussion, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I, I would just say, we didn't take any action on your strong feelings that we needed more quotes.
Right, because you said it would come.
And it's got to come back, I mean.
It's got to come back.
And we haven't approved anything yet. But the second one, and Darren, maybe this will be how we kick it off, for you to take us through. Second one is, what we ended up talking about with Bolton-Mink is not taking over our entire watchman services program, but, but being almost a standby tool that we would have to assist us for, if, if we get really, really busy and there is concern by a landowner that, that now Nick Harich doesn't have time to get to and address right of way, we could send them in. Or if it's more of a little complex issue, that we could rely on their expertise to give us some guidance. Now, I'll remind everybody that the only time engineering kicks in is when it's a project of a certain level or beyond. When we have to use outside engineering, what is that, it's 50,000 out?
Correct.
So if it's a project of 50,000 or less, which 90% of the work we do in Drainage Districts is 50,000 or less, we choose to handle it in-house wherever possible, or we'll go out and just hire a one-off contractor to go in and, and deal with that thing. That wouldn't change at all in what we're talking about. This would just be an additional resource that Darren and now Nick Harich would have to call on for those, those outside of the box kind of situations.
Okay, did we ever get clarification about if there was a cumulative effect on these? If every time we sent out the, the watchman service, and it ended up that we reached above what we thought it might be the 50,000 point again?
Yeah, it's not cumulative, because we're not entering, we would not be entering into a contract that has any type of minimums, or it is a per project kind of thing. Darren, let's get to you, so that you can take us through what you've got for us today.
First, just to address the legal review real quick. There was two comments from Legal. One was, we need to add a termination clause, that it could be terminated anytime by the county. And secondly, they wanted a independent contractor clause in here that we added, said they're not county employees, they're just county, employees by hire through independent contract. Those were their only comments from Legal. My comments, we just had two small changes. One was under number one, Bolton-Mink will perform field investigation of the reported problem, and then we added, for projects that the county engineer requests assistance on. So I'm viewing this more as another tool in the toolbox, not having them take over the district service by any means. So anything I deem we need assistance on, and a little difference from what you just said, Rick, I view it, even stuff under 50,000, the perfect example right now is the railroad crossing south of Purnell.
Right.
We need to get that, a new tile board under the railroad, and it's got some pretty complicated permits to be submitted to the railroad. That's the perfect thing we could turn over to ISG to get done for us. Before, the other thing that's changed is that 50,000 recently just bumped up to 50, it used to be down to 20.
Right.
And so there, there wasn't much we could do. This will be, should be under 50, so we can turn it over to them and get that, the ball rolling much faster than we.
Absolutely. And so what I was trying to say is, we're mandated by code, that if it's 50 or over, we have to use engineering. I wasn't trying to imply that that's the only time we would ever use outside services. Much like any complex project, if you don't feel can best be done in-house, if that's the best way to use public, your staff resources, then we would go out and get somebody else to do it. And I think that railroad crossing south of Purnell is a great example of that.
Because that's going to take some engineering, even though it's under 50,000, it'll take some engineering. And we don't do engineering for the districts. We do repairs and build that back, but we never build any engineering back to the district, so just to make that clear. So that was a change, and then the only other change, we took out 2D, which was like annual field check for brush management control program. And that kind of addresses the comment earlier about the in-house staff. We currently do have an in-house person to take care of that, so that's why we're taking this out IRVM. They do that anyway, so we're going to take that out. And they're going to view it kind of the same way I, I do. If they get a project that's big enough for brush removal or something, that they could hire ISG to go get bids and.
Which they currently hire outside contractors for those bigger brush removal projects, with maintenance issues as we have it. So, I mean, let's be clear, since John had the question for us starting off the meeting, would Dave Toot employ one full-time person who responsibility was tile, right? He drives the, drives the tile truck, he deals with that, and then you had other staff that will assist him, would assist him as needed? Now, you're viewing Nick Harich, his hire, in the same way.
Yeah, definitely.
So we, we got that staff person. We also have a staff person in IRVM, in Tyler, what's Tyler's last name?
Kelly.
Kelly. Tyler Kelly, who, his primary responsibility is dealing with our open ditches and vegetation in our open ditches, which was something that Story County did not worry about prior to about 2012, unless there was a landowner complaint. Now we have proactively started to do that. So the question from John, and I'm trying to paraphrase this, John, so you help me if I miss, the question was, John, is why don't we just staff up at the county level to the point that we would never need outside help and deal with it all on our own? Can you give us your thoughts on that?
Well, for the IRVM services, that's already done. For the engineering side, they don't come up all that often, so I don't know if we'd be able to staff a person full-time. But when they do come up, it's good to get, get them going as quickly as possible, so we have the agreement in place, we can just turn it over to them and go. I just don't think we have enough work to keep one person staffed all the time.
Additional, additional to that.
Yeah. And so, I'm referring more to the engineering side of things. We're always going to be doing the maintenance side of things, as far as I'm concerned. So that's going to stay the same. It's just those that kick up to another level. We just replaced 600 feet of tile in a stretch that was beyond our capabilities in-house, so we went out and got bids. And that's from talking about engineering, to get some help to do all that. It takes a lot of time to meet multiple contractors, get bids, and then, you know, review the bids.
So I'm viewing the potential value of a contract like this as, it takes a couple layers of complexity off your plate. So you would, now, we get a project that's too complex, or, or too complex, or too time-consuming for your staff, you or your staff to handle, you currently would go out and find some engineering, but it's about three steps for you to do that, and if you have a, a program like this in place, it's one phone call and they're on. Do you see it that way?
Yeah.
Other, John, did I get to your question, or were there more questions that you had?
My understanding is not perfect, but it's much better. I'll settle for that today.
That's good enough, okay. Other questions for Darren about this, again, I'm, I'm suggesting that this is not a board of supervisory action item, this is a Drainage District trustee action item. And so Darren, what I think I would ask you is, work with Scott Wall coming out of this meeting to set a Drainage District trustee meeting, so that we can actually act on, on or, or consider action on something like this.
You had said early on, in regards to the costing, where it would be stood by the Drainage Districts, but I think as, in my mind, where you presented this, there would be some engineering component on potential using it. I look at this watchman service as something that is great class deployed as needed, such that we are, we are holding this in extreme reserve, that we don't have the, you know, there may be projects out there that are standing, that we just don't have the manpower to address at the time that a land, a landowner would like us to address. So I'm, I'm not so coddled on the costing on the front side, because the thing is, you don't know whether you're using it or not. Yeah, at any point that you do, that you add a cost to a project, that we would not otherwise be getting to. So would, just for clarification sake, the Drainage District would be standing in entirety any watchman services, there would be no point in your department that you would be deploying a watchman service on an engineering project, that they would not be something that the county itself would be standing? As I'm saying, your budget, your dollars, your, your department.
I don't know if I'm completely following you there. We, we build nothing from the engineering side right now to Drainage Districts. It's only going to go out and do repairs. So it's, it's beyond repair, it's an investigation, that type of stuff, or engineering at all, but we, we don't build any of that out of.
Okay, so it's just.
I go out at times, try to help as much as I can, but I don't build any.
Artin Wisely addresses here several months ago, said, are you going to do this? This is going to be something that you're going to be charging out to the landowners.
Right.
He had a very strong opinion, this is why we wouldn't do this, but.
Yeah, and that's where we come, we're still going to have Nick in that position now doing the same thing, but if he gets overwhelmed in the spring, which often happens when the farmers want to plant, they want everything fixed immediately, we've got one more person we can call and say, hey, help out.
But be completely clear, so, so Arden's right, and Marty is a right concern, so right now, any work that, that Darren does outside of having staff actually repair the, the tile or the, the issue, um, that is charged back to the landowners of the drainage district. But any work that you or Tyler's parks or anybody like that puts in does not get charged back. If we, if we were to call on somebody in Watchman Services, that would be paid by the district, not by the county.
That would, that's. When the code refers to engineer in the drainage district code, it's not referring to me. It's referring to the district's engineer.
Right.
So they would pay.
That would be better than my question.
Okay, good. Other questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Darren, you'll work with Scott Wall to hit this in front of us as trustees.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, man. Uh, next discussion, consideration of revisions to the asset policies and procedures that should be brought. John, thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The asset administrative team looks at the policies and procedures on an annual basis, and any revisions that we recommend go through the asset board and then individually to each funder, so that is what you have before you today. The asset board did recommend approval of these changes at their May 10th meeting. And so, um, we've got about six of them here, so I'll go through them briefly. Please let me know if you've got questions or comments along the way. Um, on page three, under section 3C, we are changing the number of panel representatives from three down to one. And this has kind of been the, an evolution with the panel representatives. For the longest time, asset had four panels. We reduced that to three panels, um, with education, income, and health. Um, and we've been talking to the Story County Human Services Council, that is the body that appoints the panel representatives. And, um, they wanted to see kind of a change in, in appointments, because we've been making these changes with the panels, and they feel that because of the increased communication through electronic means, um, if they just have one representative that's, that's at the table with asset versus three, they could still get the benefit that they, they've always received. Um, so we agreed to that change, and so there'll be one individual instead of three. Um, on page six, under section eight, um, it's just, uh, reflecting what we made in terms of the panel representative, um, language changes on page three. Page eight, we added letter E to reflect a new requirement, and that is, um, that agencies provide board meeting minutes, um, so that the admin team has access to those minutes and is able to follow along what's going on in individual board procedures. Um, we are using Dropbox, um, as a means to collect those minutes, and then the admin team members can go in and, and review those minutes as they're uploading.
I have one question. I just think it's a great change.
Okay.
I think that they keep you guys more informed about what's happening and when you want to ask questions on a more timely basis, so.
Right, thank you for that, Lars. And I, we've, different admin team members receive different meeting minutes from, from a variety of, of agencies. We just think that this is going to be more consistent, more cohesive. We did, um, share this with the agencies and, um, the means in which we were going to access those minutes, and, and we didn't receive any comments back, so. Um, page nine, we're, um, changing, um, when we're reviewing these policies, we're just changing it from May 1st to the month of May, just for more flexibility. Um, page 16, we're updating the service names, um, for services that are provided by Access, making them a little more, um, inclusive of, of today's language. Um, and Access had approached us about this a year ago, and so we've met with them, and they provided the, the names to, um, so instead of battering relief, it will be changed to domestic abuse crisis and support. And rape relief will be changed to sexual abuse crisis and support. And then lastly, on page 19, we're changing the deadline for new and expanded services from August 1st to June 1st. That just gives us a little more time to work through the process, um, to address these new and expanded services, and letting agencies know, um, whether or not to include them in their budgets that are due in September. Questions or comments?
Much like Lars, I'm surprised that you weren't getting the meetings through these areas. I mean, other than anecolia, knowing people on the board, how would you have the opportunity to know in real time with the, their respective boards we're discussing? I guess I'm surprised, but well, everything else is housekeeping, I supported, I think this is, you know, what was going on.
And I want to, just a little caveat on those board meeting minutes. If we requested them from a particular agency, we receive them, but it, but on a regular basis, it was.
I've never seen an ulterior there. I'm just saying, I'm surprised that wasn't just an automatic, you know, just pass-through, that here's what we talk about as your funder, and just so you can look over her shoulder and know we're proposing or discussing.
Right.
No, good. And while I'm a little sad to see from August 1st to June 1st, I understand the reasoning behind it. It's always, we ask our human service agencies to go so far ahead, to anticipate, you know, so, but I certainly understand it, at least it gives everybody more lead time, yeah, so.
Absolutely. Motion.
Are you considering revisions to the asset policies and procedures as presented?
I would second.
Further discussion. That great job, as always, thank you. Chitty, all right. Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye.
Thank you.
Revisions to asset policy procedures passed. Next discussion, consideration of awarding to HPC, Harold Pike Construction, uh, for a base amount of $380,000 in alternative 1 for 13.5 for two replacements, uh, furnaces and condensers, and alternative number, uh, 2, $9,000 for acoustic panels, the animal shelter project. Could it be, we're getting here to the end of?
It's possible, Horace. Good morning. So, yes, we took bids last week, um, at the meeting. Uh, again, we received the low bid from HPC out of the four bids that we received, uh, are a little over the budget that we proposed. I think kind of looking at some of that information, we did receive from HPC as schedule of values yesterday, kind of showing that. Um, for the most part, we attribute a lot of that to, we did increase the scope on some paving, we're doing some of the parking lot to get it up to ADA standards. Uh, they had about a $20,000 price for that paving work that we're doing. And then fencing, we had initially fenced just for a dog kennel area outside. The fences, we put it in the bid, actually fences the entire north and west side of the site to protect that private property owner, uh, from persons who are at the shelter, maybe wandering out to the pond and other things with dogs or whatever. So that, that fence is part of the bid. The fencing bid was about 16,000.
Yes.
So that's about 10,000 more than what we had in our original estimate, so that's about a $30,000 add from where we were, which is pretty close to where we would have seen the budget. Uh, there's some other things, I know that Joby had, um, on that work that was going to be done by the county. The, the add or the deduct for that amount of 10,000 was maybe less than we had anticipated.
Yeah, it's less than.
Yeah, part of that is the fact that Joby's already done some of that work. He's done down, they've taken ceilings and lighting down in the, in the one portion of the building, they've removed the flooring and carpeting. So some of that work we didn't have in the bid anyway, because he'd already done it. So that accounts for a little bit of that percentage, uh, and I think, yeah.
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 Yeah, so since we're talking about the deduct, when, you know, that's total, we still have to buy material. So when you start factoring, I had between $6,000 and $7,000 worth of material that we'd still have to buy. So when you look at, for an extra, you know, $3,000 to $4,000, and the new construction's done right along with the rest of the project, where.
Yeah.
Facilities wouldn't be able to get to it till the end of winter. So it's kind of money well spent in my eyes for not taking the deduct, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, so, and rightly pointed out, so this ends up, all said and done, about $30,000 more than, than we had talked about.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, but it's $30,000 that, that we're not asking our staff to do the work, and we're getting a little more than made the fencing you talked about, a little more than we were, than we were thinking.
And then a couple other things that, since we got the demo done, and we pulled some of the ceilings out, we found some, the walls weren't finished all the way to the top. But luckily, they, during the walkthrough, the contractors were able to see that. So that is reflected in the bid, so that's a little extra work than wasn't planned for, so.
Well, it wouldn't have been part of our.
Exactly.
Our original estimate, yeah.
Question, board.
Uh, this is, I'm glad to see you guys doing that, please. I, uh, have full support of this. You got any more?
Um, I'm not, but it's two of you, probably from a financial, as we get into that kind of discussion about where the other 30,000 would come from and.
Well, let, um, let's talk about that in a, in a general way right now. Uh, my vision on that is pretty simple. We, we'd agreed, uh, with 350 that we were going to split that cost between the general fund and the Friends of Animals fund. And I don't know that I view this a whole lot differently as a starting point for the conversation. Uh, half the project, half the project. Uh, so.
Um, for, yeah, our base at 350, I just look at, uh, kind of the additional cost, and also the add-ons, which I, I have a, my opinion is, is that it might be just as cost-effective to do what we, the add-ons now, as it is to come back and do them later if there's a large, uh, increase. That's the, uh, $9,000 and the $13,000 ones.
Yes, so.
That, that's what we're breaking.
Right, and they're already, they're already in here.
They're not in the 380.
No, they're not in the 380.
That would be on top of the 380, so that really, that 30,000.
So then coming to the source of funding, I know that Friends of Animals, who does a great job with, um, uh, her donors, but, um, asking them for another $25,000 from, from that account, um, I, I'd be more comfortable picking up the other 25, that we get the 175, 175 split, and have us take a look if we're financially able. I see Lisa Markley in the back of the room there, okay? Uh, to see where, would that probably come from, from our, probably any fund balances or.
Yeah, so, I mean, so the reality of this is, that's a decision that can be, and Lisa, I'm going to look to you as I say this, in case I'm, I'm missing it. That's a decision that we can make as we get through the budget here and get the project finished up.
Okay.
Because the reality is, we're going to see a change order to come, come through on this thing probably, and we're going to pay, uh, all of this initially out of the general fund. I mean, that's where the check to Harold Pike is going to come from the general fund, and then we're looking at transferring funds from Friends of Animals into the general fund to recoup what we're paying out of that. Is that right, Lisa?
Actually, no, I budgeted, um, uh, we, we originally budgeted half and half, so half out of the Friends of Animals fund.
So you do that right up front? So I would get, we budgeted as that, but we pay out of the general fund and then pull the money over from Friends of Animals? You just pay it both out there, okay? So when do you have to know, when does the board have to make a decision of, of, uh, how much, of what percentage of this ultimately is coming out of Friends of Animals?
I'd like to know going into the project, how, how we're going to do it, because, um, I'm going to have to amend the budget right off the bat. We, we've drug this out now for long enough that I keep putting it in and then it doesn't get spent, so I have to amend it in again. Um, so I'd like to know as soon as possible how we're planning on doing it, and I can give you an update on, not right now, because I don't have it with me, but, um, on what is left in the capital projects fund that we have moved over there, and what additional funds could be moved to the capital projects fund to pay for it, because that's how we're paying for this.
Okay.
Our, our portion.
Our portion and then the Friends of Animal portion, okay. What's in Friends of Animal right now, Sue?
270?
Right, without the money coming out.
270, period. The balance is 270-ish.
Okay.
Ish. Don't quote me on that.
Yep.
So basically, we'd be bringing Friends of Animal, given the ish factor.
Okay.
So, so we'd be bringing it down to about 95,000. Okay? And we kept it, if we held it once, every 90,000.
So as I see this, and trying to follow along, Members' Wives, thank you for coming up, Lisa. We have the 380,000 based in, with the alternance of 13.5 and 9,000. So the totality, can we just split that? Is that what I'm hearing proposed, or you would like to see the alternance pulled out of the general fund, or, you know, help me here, just follow this around?
Sure. I would like to cap what comes out of the Friends of Animals at 175,000. So I am, I am asking that the additional bid cost of the additional 30, plus then the 22,000 in the adds, would come from us, the, the Story County itself, rather than Friends of Animal. Rick is proposing we split it down the middle. And, and for me, it's more of a looking toward the future, since Sue draws on that Friends of Animals account every year, about what, 15,000 to 20,000 that she uses for feeding and medical for animals. So that's why I'm, I'm, I'd like to not pull her down entirely, you know, down to about 75,000.
She also brings in between 15,000 and 20,000 a year.
Right.
I mean, she usually, it's a wash usually.
Yeah, right. It's, it, that account has not been going down traditionally, and the money's been put in there, well, so, so we, we were told as a board that one of the great reasons to purchase this building is, we could utilize a rather large donation to Friends of Animals to help us purchase this building, and then ultimately make the building our own and get it where we need to go. So I view it this way, or I think first of all, the, the furnaces should absolutely reside with the board. That's something that if we don't do it now, we're going to do it later, and we're not going to take that out of Friends of Animals at that point. So, so I'm good with the 13.5. I think the $380,000, we had talked all the way through about we were trying to go 50/50 on this. I think if it's worth doing, it's worth staying 50/50. The acoustic panels, I would actually make the argument that that's the perfect thing to spend Friends of Animals money on, uh, but I would be more than willing to split that 50/50 to get it done. So I think what I'm suggesting is, a true 50/50 split on the 380, a 50/50 split on the 9, and we absorb the 13.5 for the two new furnaces, because I think that rests with us anyway.
Okay. I hear that as a viable compromise, um, given, given the reasoning that you've got for it.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Uh, we don't need to take action on that right now, do we, Lisa?
No.
That just gives you an idea of what's come from, Sue, we can talk about it later, the way it's all going to work. But I think it's important that we be really transparent about what, how we're thinking of paying that. The issue before us is, go ahead and awarding the bid to HPC with the two alternates, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
See, I just, I, the only issue is, okay, where are the dollars coming from? I agree, I like the, uh, the fact that, uh, Sue is fortunate to have a source of funding to help provide this. People of Story County need to know, Animal Control is actually carrying their share on this, this project. It's not all on, uh, the taxpayers, and I think we should do this. I would make a motion, if anybody's at that point, that we move consideration awarding the bid to HPC for the base amount of 380,000 dollars, with the caveat that alternate 1 for 13,500 for the two replacement furnaces to be paid for by the county, and alternate 2 to be split between Friends of Animals and the county for a grand total of 4,500 at 9,000 total. Kind of funky, a little.
Yep.
So it's still up, right? Okay, I would second that, oh, shoot.
Second, okay, so, just, just, you know, Marty brings up a great point. I think it's really important for people to know, uh, that donation, donation accounts I think it's really important for people to know, uh, that donation, donation accounts specifically earmarked as Friends of Animals, uh, played a large, large role in the county acquiring this property and now doing the renovations of this property. It will be a county-owned, it is a county-owned facility, uh, but it's, uh, it'd be a county-owned, county-maintained, uh, facility in perpetuity. But the donation account played a huge role in us being able to get it and now modify it to really be able to be used for the long term. Anything else? If not, we'll vote. Kitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. We award the bid to HPC. Have you got anything? Thank you. Next item is discussion consideration of extending the deadline for the technical assistance to communities from June first to June fifteenth. So, uh, three more whole days. Point man.
Good morning.
Ali, Anna.
Good morning. Well, um, back in February, the board did approve Resolution eighteen-eighty-one that set the technical assistance to communities grant program. Um, I set a date in that resolution, June first. Um, then, and the, all the materials that got distributed to the communities have that date. And I, I set that date, um, well in advance, the last day that's due for the claims for this, this fiscal year. That's actually the nineteenth. Just knowing, I'd like some time to be able to process everything. Um, that message wasn't necessarily translated a hundred percent to the communities. And I started getting phone calls last week, um, after the deadline, hey, when do we need our stuff in? And so Brenda and I talked about it, I talked to Lisa. We, we thought that extending it out two weeks to this Friday, it'll still give me a couple of days to get everything compiled into the Alder's office would be worthwhile bringing to the board for discussion. We did receive, um, Cambridge Collins's hearing so far by the deadline. And then I know Colin, um, Colo has, actually, she has sent it to me already, um, but it's been past the deadline. And I think Gilbert has some materials as well.
Maxwell potentially. I, I think the confusion is, is that there's a deadline at the end of June for them to turn in all of their reports in terms of who's sitting as an appointee and kind of wrapping up that whole Story County economic development. Um, so next year will be better, you know, we'll, we'll make sure we get the dates correct. But I do, and I'll make sure I touch base with all of those that aren't in, uh, just because I don't know that they may, may not have a potential project. They may, uh, actually have utilized it and again, uh, but I'll do that this afternoon to make sure everybody understands should you, uh, extend out that they have till Friday to get in, so.
Do you have any questions?
Marty, it still works in your timeframe to get it paid out of this discussion here. Go ahead.
No, I have no questions. Congratulations on, um, the attempt to be very proactive with giving you the whole month to do the agenda. I'll make the motion. Okay. I move that we extend the deadline for the technical assistance to communities from June first to June fifteenth, the three eighty.
Thank you.
Motion in the second for the discussion. Olson?
Aye.
Kitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes, thank you guys.
All right.
Next is discussion consideration of Story County website standard guide after seven-day review. Marty, comments?
Good morning. Good morning, Board. Barb Steinbach, Information Technology. I did receive one comment on late Friday afternoon, just some feedback. Um, no content changes, just pointing out that, um, our use of the word civic plus. I've seen it both ways. In the document, it's one word, but on Civic Plus's website, it's two words. So I felt that was a good suggestion that maybe we should change Civic Plus to be two words instead of one. And then they pointed out there was, um, a grammatical error on page one. Two, two of them were, we had the departments slash offices and both words weren't plural. So I matched those up and that's it.
Go ahead.
So no, no content changes, just a few grammatical errors.
So I take a motion for final approval of the website's standards after seven-day review.
I would so move that we give final approvals of the Story County Website Standards Guide as now amended.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And the amendments were not no, uh, no substantive content, but rather grammatical.
Yes, just cleanup.
Any further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Kitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Website's standards guide is official. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Uh, next is consideration of change order number one between Boulder Contracting LLC and Story County Conservation on tilt. Mike Cox, bring it right.
Good morning.
Good morning. So first off, I'm gonna give you, uh, let you guys take a look at this. And Rick, you've probably already seen it, but this is the material that we're referencing here. This is a sample.
So we talked about an alternate of putting that in some places on our line. What was originally laid out as lime, crushed limestone trails.
Right, so when we, when we, uh, when we issued the bids for this and when we awarded the contracts, we included this material over a portion of our secondary trails, um, at the Tedesco Learning Corridor. We awarded that, um, and we asked the contractor to, uh, give us some proposals for, um, changing the composition of that material slightly and also to give us a proposal for some increased, um, area for it. So, um, originally, we spec'd up one hundred percent glass, recycled glass composition. And we went back and, uh, asked them to give us some prices on varying different recycled glass and pea gravel compositions. And again, varying different, uh, amounts. What they, uh, what they gave us was a significantly reduced price, um, on that material versus the recycled glass material, which we originally, um, specified. And so what the, uh, Conservation Board is recommending that we move forward with this change order to accept their proposal to, uh, essentially delete the additive alternate. So we don't award that additive alternate, um, and we replace that with this material, which is a twenty percent recycled glass content and then the balance of, uh, pea gravel. And we increase the amounts, um, to the point where we're replacing all of the originally specified crushed limestone trail with this material. So what we've effectively done, if we award that, is, um, removed all of the limestone, the crushed limestone trails from, uh, the learning corridor and replaced them with this material, which is a permeable, um, uh, a porous material. I think we'll end up with a much better product in the long run. We know that, uh, we put limestone in, we were concerned about, um, costing and, uh, we have concerns over the long run with limestone and we've, we've had problems with it in the past. Um, now we have the ability to, uh, bring the price down a little bit with the change in the spec for the material and to accomplish more area. So in the end, the, uh, the net change order for here is ninety-five thousand dollars. And that's what it accomplishes essentially. The other thing that I didn't mention is in this change order is an addition of a six-inch, um, if you will, subbase for this material on each side of the trail. And what that does is, is, um, was not included in the original, um, in the original bid or the original spec. What that does is, is give a little bit more, um, if you will, support to that material, um, on the edges particularly. Uh, and so we'll have more longevity out of, of that material. Um, that material has been, um, has been applied across the country in different, uh, applications. Um, always maintained its porosity quite well. Um, we may, we, we will probably have to occasionally sweep it, um, or hose it off with power washers. Um, but to maintain the, the porosity in it, um, if it, if we get other, um, soil, sand, material on top of it, we may have to maintain it, clean it off. But, um, it's been used, uh, and real, um, widely accepted, um, across the country. And, uh, so we're really happy with it. It will be able to, uh, hold a, um, small equipment on it, um, for maintenance, uh, maintenance needs. So rubber-padded equipment, no problem at all with, with getting on the trail. So, um, Conservation Board is recommending that, uh, we move forward with this change order.
We expect less maintenance than we would have had with limestone. And it's important to note, we're not talking about replacing any of the asphalt in either wide primary trails or any of the mulch, uh, secondary trails. We are talking about those secondary crushed gravel trails replacing it with this. Um, I think the company that manufactures this, uh, as a demonstration site, they, they utilize this for the places that they park their big, heavy equipment bulldozers and things like that. And, and it's held up really, really well.
Yeah, they've done some, some, uh, kind of some, some testing, if you, if you will, on, on how well it holds up and, um, and drive large equipment up, up and onto it. And, uh, said over the several years of doing that, they've had one small section, uh, that they've had to replace on the edge where they're driving, uh, in fact, a bulldozer up on top of it. So it's, it's pretty, pretty sturdy material.
Questions? Uh, it's ninety-five thousand dollar additional, which is still well within the limits of the scope of this project.
Correct, correct.
So the dollars aren't even allocated, is that what you're saying? So there's no progress at the general?
No progress at the general. Now, this, this is money that's already put out there for tilt and just has to come to us because it would be in addition to the contract that we approved.
Correct, correct.
I have no problem with this.
No, it sounds like a good alternate and I just wanna thank you for your urgent notes. They're very clear, they helped me then look at the supporting documentation and they're really helpful to me. So thank you. Um, so yeah, I have no problem.
Make that motion?
Yes, I move that we increase the contract by ninety-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars uh, to pay for this alternate, um, what do I wanna call this? Late, uh, covering?
Alter, alternative, yeah.
I'll just call it. Change order number one.
Change order number one. How's that, Shelley? Okay. Okay, got it.
You'll second that?
I would second that.
All right, we got a motion in the second, further discussion? Mike, I think this, this, um, uh, everything you've done so far with tilt, I think this is another great demonstration point. I think there'll be a lot of people interested in what this material does as we look at more and more permeable ways that are beyond crushed soil, um, to, to address some of the needs that we're having for it.
Well, I'm glad you said that and I, I, um, because I didn't. And, and everything about this project is, is viewed in the long run as being a demonstration project, a way to uplift, if you will, our environmental standards, stormwater standards, et cetera. And this is a good example of that. And we hope that, uh, that it will be used to that effect and served by many who see this as a good option to provide that. Good, usable, um, hard surface, but yet porous and permeable. Thanks.
I would add a good number, I would add a that.
Uh, okay. We got a motion in the second, any further discussion?
None.
Olson?
Aye.
Kitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes, thanks, Mike. Next, we're talking about the extension of the contract, uh, for ecological consulting, um, with, um, for our sensitive areas.
Correct, and thank you. Um, so as you know, we, uh, boy, we started a discussion of sensitive, uh, sensitive areas, ecologically sensitive areas, I, I don't know how many years ago now. Um, it's been several years ago and, um, identified as, as a need. It's identified in the, um, Conservation Board's strategic plan and, uh, is also identified in the C two C. And, and so we know we, we want to do that. You know, we're, we're charged with, if you will, um, improving our, our quality of life, connecting people with nature and improving our natural resources. And this is one way that, uh, that we feel that, that we need to, uh, get this understanding in order to best accomplish that, um, that goal. So, uh, we started this with the idea that, that it would, it would be a multiple-year project and would probably cost in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, in order to do it. So we broke this up into a few phases. The first phase we did just via desktop and that was kind of a identification and prioritization of areas that, that we thought we needed to get on the ground and do some field inventory with. Second phase was, uh, actually to start that field inventory. And we contracted with this firm to do five thousand acres of areas that were identified in that desktop review, if you will. That desktop review identified in odd numbers, twenty-five thousand acres, uh, with potential for, uh, uh, natural resources or to be, I should say, to be, um, sensitive areas for natural resources. Uh, so in this first contract, they will complete or very nearly complete that five thousand acres. To date, they've done three thousand and they are working, um, quite a bit, quite extensively right now and will be throughout the end of this FY to, to get that completed. What we found is, uh, a lot of the, the way that we ranked, uh, areas for high sensitive, high potential, medium potential and low potential to have sensitive areas, um, we're finding some areas that we called, that were identified as medium that, that were actually done some work on and they should really be high. Um, so we're, we're finding some of those areas that there's interlap between what they were originally graded as for potential and what we're finding on the ground. And so what we're asking for with this contract, and we chatted about it in the budget work sessions, is to, um, extend, um, do another five thousand acres. So all in all, we will have surveyed ten thousand of the twenty-five thousand identified. One thing I wanna mention with this, in, when we discussed it and we did budget for it in, in the FY nineteen budget, that in the process of doing that, we recognized that this is a, um, innovative project, if you will, one that a lot of, uh, counties don't have. In fact, we're the only ones that have moved forward with this. We wanna use it as, again, we wanna use it as a model. And we want to, um, be able to, uh, if you will, help other counties along with what we're learning here so that they can better manage theirs, um, like we are ours. I had talked about trying to find some grant funding for this. And so, you know, normally I, I think we're, we do an okay job at turning over rocks and, and finding outside, outside funds to come in. This one, I have not been able to do that. Haven't been able to find any grant sources for it, um, not for the lack of trying. And, and so what we're asking for here and what the Conservation Board discussed and approved last night was, uh, using a portion of the budgeted money and then using a portion of the, um, Energy Transfer Fund um, for the, uh, for, for the balance of it. In fact, what they are suggesting and what they are recommending to the board is to use thirty thousand of the fifty-seven thousand in this contract from the Energy Transfer Fund and then save the taxpayers that twenty-seven thousand or that balance and change, um, or, excuse me. Use thirty from the Energy Transfer Fund, saving the taxpayer, um, burden that amount and using twenty-seven of the general fund of the budgeted sixty thousand that we have.
And I think that's important to note, we approved a budget that had sixty thousand into this item, but we talked about it that time, you were gonna try not to spend the full sixty.
Right.
So I'm so appreciative of Conservation Board, even though you couldn't find any outside sources of money, finding an internal source of money that, that saves the taxpayers some on what we budgeted. Uh, I'll just, I'll just say, I think this is an important project. I think we can't find any grant funding for this because nobody's doing it and, and people have not recognized the value, but Mike touched on it. Um, so we do the tabletop exercise and we identify twenty-five thousand acres that we put in different categories and we think there's some value in those. But until you get off the ground, and, and I'll be clear on what we're doing here. They're actually walking the ground and saying, oh, here's a black walnut, here's a red oak, here's a, uh, this is what the ground cover's like. They're worried you can get some notations on what birds, if it's, if it's a unique kind of bird, what birds were written in the area. And we're starting to know this ground a lot better, which is valuable to us on our public grounds, but that's fairly low-hanging fruit. What the real import here is identifying those areas of value that are on private property with willing landowners and then assisting them in the best ways to maintain and enhance those properties. And let's be really clear with this, because one of the fears from some of the landowners that we contacted has been, no, I don't wanna let you on our property, then you're just gonna wanna tell me what I've gotta do with it. That's not our intent at all in this. Our intent is simply to know what's out there so that we can help the private landowners best maintain those, those special areas of native vegetation that we have.
That's, and so that's been one of the, the big successes of this, of the project thus far is the, we, we have, we have top-notch botanists on this, so this kind. top-notch botanists on this, so this contract is with folks that, they're the best out there. And so they're doing just incredible work and we've got a number of landowners that are going along on these and just learning an incredible amount from our botanists and so there's been-
Oh, a huge initial response rate, right? Initially, what we contacted, 280-ish landowners and we heard back almost immediately from about 140 of those, any of those who, of us who have done any kind of direct mail stuff, a 50% response rate is off the chart and the huge percentage, overwhelming percentage of those 140 that responded, 140-ish that responded was, yes, absolutely, in fact, many of these landowners walked the site with the botanist, when the botanist was there in order to learn more about their land.
Right.
So it's a cool deal, I encourage us, so we put this in the budget, we clearly bought into it during budget time, Mike and the Conservation Board is proposing a way for it to come in much under budget in terms of tax dollars used, I would hope we would sign off and move ahead.
I do recall through the budgeting side this firm that even said you were going to try to look for additional dollars. I thought that we didn't, that's always happened, but your requirements, as much as anybody seems to find them, I would give a hat tip to a greatest board for having the wisdom to assign the NAPAL money to this department, to use it in behalf of the county and its citizens, and for taking those funds and putting it and applying, I would move that we have moved Conservation, the extension of the contract for services between botanical and ecological consulting in Story County Conservation effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019 for 57,875, which is 30,000 from the NAPAL funds and 27,875 from our general funds in FY19.
Good job. I'll second.
Motion in the second, and just to underscore how good Conservation is, Mike would just approve, Conservation just approved the contract last night, grant of another 100,000 for the Jordan Acres, so Jordan Acres was total of a $880,000 project to bring under the Story County poll. Remind us how much tax dollars were used of that $880,000 to acquire that property?
$10,000.
Yeah.
Conservation does a nice job going out and finding outside money. Yes. Further discussion on the sensitive areas assessment?
None.
Sanders, aye. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
No agency reports today, departmental reports.
Just as a point where we hit number seven there, change order for generator team services.
I got it.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't hold it in. Yep.
I guess I did.
Yep, thanks for catching that. Departmental reports, county outreach and special projects quarterly reports.
Okay. Okay. What I'm going to do is, in the interest of time, breeze through a lot of the information and just focus on what lies ahead. Please stop me if you do have questions. I do want to start by, just kind of coming over, going over an issue that's just kind of starting to emerge right now, I'm going to go right to the communications plan slide. That camera over there now, for the second week in a row, has stopped, about 45 minutes in or hour 15 minutes and we've been, and I watched Matt do it again this morning, formatting the card, making sure data's clear, we either need a new SD card or the camera could have been dropped and something awry in the camera. So I will be probably bringing that to IT for some assistance, but just so you know, last week's video had the issue and I think from 45 minutes on, it's all audio. Matt was able to catch it today and restarted it, but we may be running the same issue again. So that might be something for future discussion, that's gained a lot of interest.
Of course, it's part of our discussion of the overall project, but it's just important to know that we need to do something.
Right.
We'll have it limping along as best we can right now.
Hopefully not too much longer.
Same with the projector.
Yeah, right. With those interesting colors compared to what we're looking at.
Well, I, actually, I knew that, so I pinned, if you look at the color on my screen, it's green, I picked that in purpose for today's presentation. I just, as I said, I'm going to breeze through this, there are a lot of things that I've been working on and those have been highlighted, but specifically in communications plan, I still have not scheduled the quadrant meetings for this spring. Every time I think I might find the week to get scheduled, the weather just does something on, like the hail we had, what, three weeks ago now? I don't know, do you want to just wait and just do an early fall one before harvest hits or do you still want me to try and get a spring/summer one in?
I have been, and I only stayed two-plus years on the board here, but I have nothing but disappointed turnout.
Yeah.
We go to zero and then we get turnout, we go everywhere else.
We got Gilbert this year, but- I think it's, we, I find this looking not doing this, you know, a spring one and then as we head toward fall, us talking about it, getting input from all of the director heads and maybe getting some input from the communities now and just seeing what's working for you, what does work, what doesn't, yeah, so I'm okay with a postponement.
Yeah, I don't have any, we're chasing, well, we went to two a year as an experiment and I think it's reasonable to say we tried two a year as an experiment and we weren't getting the interest that maybe we had hoped for and so I'm fine, if this board wants to go back to just, you know, once in the fall, I'm not sure I like the idea of doing it before harvest, but once in the fall at some point, it makes a lot of sense to me.
I'm not picking a date, I'm just saying, I, on a conceptual basis, I'm not saying the real community buying that I would have thought that you would have, but then again, I also look at the hits on our meetings, on the cameras working, that is pretty modest too, I mean-
Right. And the other thing that we're doing that I think helps supplement a part of those meetings at least is the quarterly hour story. I do know at least the local officials I talk to, they're reading it and so some of that information's coming out. Marty, you go out a lot to-
So the city council meeting, you are seeing your economic development, just the attendance, I believe, has grown, the content is clearly off the charts of what it had been when I started and I think that, you know, it's the planning, the printed material that we're providing in the sun, the printed material that you see our story has gone into city offices where it's available for people to pick up and read, I think maybe we have done in multiple directions that what you were thinking, the thought process of quadrants that we provided then and there, I think you've already kind of moved on in a way that's actually better and maybe quadrant is the one thing, it's just like, well, it was nice, but maybe it's not the end-all, be-all that once was.
Yeah, and so I completely agree with that, I don't think, so doing the quadrant meetings twice a year is a very clear effort to try to absolutely engage people. Boris and I have the conversation, I have it pretty regularly, right, there's two components, there is, it's our responsibility to reach out all we can, it's not our responsibility to make sure that the public reciprocates and consumes our reach out.
Right.
And so I view this two separate ways, one, I think having two quadrant meetings in each of our quadrants every year, if we're not getting a response, there's no reason to do it, there's no reason to waste that time. There is however, in my view, a reason to do one, at least one quadrant meeting every year because then it alleviates the, well, you never come to our area, you never come out and reach out to us, those people that would say that. Absolutely, because even going to city council meetings, which is phenomenal, that is a really, really limited, it's not come talk to supervisors and staff about whatever you want to talk to them about, this is an outreach opportunity that once a year in my view, it'd be four times a year, because once in each quadrant, there's value in doing it even if we have no response, because then we are. Now going beyond once a year, then we better be getting some response in order to justify the resources that we're putting into, that's my view.
I agree.
I'm there.
So let's hold the call, Leanne, and let's just figure out a good time in the call.
Sounds good. I do want to go back one slide and just talk about, no, sorry, go forward one slide, talk about the C2C plan.
Right.
At the joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission and Conservation Board next Tuesday, Monday, apologies, at the tail end of the meeting, we're also going to revisit the C2C plan implementation matrix since all three of those entities are charged with its implementation. Just want to give you a heads up that that'll be part of the agenda and discussion. Also coming before you and later this summer will be a preliminary report on health impact assessments, what that means, if it can be deployable in Story County, it's a little teaser right there, that would also go to the Board of Health and Funding and Zoning Commission after it comes to the board for you to give direction to staff whether it makes sense or not. And then the agro tourism project, those are both elements of the C2C plan. I also think we need to amend my work program to remove the master transportation RFP and then add the housing needs assessment in, so those are two components.
Yep.
Going forward, Connect Iowa, we're still plugging ahead, waiting on some information back from the BEC students that took on to the projects this past semester, actually a year long on it. The COOP COB plan, I did delay the supply purchases, supply kits, until we had an exercise done. Initially, I was going to purchase those and they're budgeted, I did give Lisa a heads up too, they're budgeted for this fiscal year, we haven't done an exercise yet, so I don't want to spend like $10,000, $12,000 buying supply kits if we really don't know if, that's, I don't want to say too much, there's going to be a component of the exercise too, so keep, that will be coming out next year then. Economic development, contracts with ABC will be on your agenda for next week and then Matt is helping us, the Economic Development Group and Brenda and Jennifer create story maps for the first impression visits, I think those will be really helpful for you guys as well as the members of the Story County Economic Development Group. I did delay taking my exam until this fall, I have no doubt I would have passed it, but I did not really want to risk wasting taxpayer money if I did not pass it, let's put it that way, I just, there was enough pressure on me to pass it, so I am signed up for that this fall. Floodplain Management Program, we're running a pilot project from, actually, last week through the end of this year, where PND, Jerry, now that he's a certified floodplain manager, is doing the reviewing of the permits, plus survey, development review, so anything that's more tied to the actual physical development of the land, I'm still maintaining the CRS responsibilities and different outreach aspects of it. It's going okay, we're still working on some of the processing of the permits and getting that process down because it is a modification that process for the time being. And I'm also pleased to know, if you come down to my office, there are two huge boxes, Mike left, but Story County Conservation was able to use some of the funding to buy two of the ward's 3D flood table models and one will be housed here in my office. Had to figure out a good solution for it actually because it is ginormous, but I'll use it for training, for staff, for community outreach, if you ever want to have a firsthand demonstration, I'll be glad to take it on and set up.
It's very great.
It's a great model, it's usable for every audience, from three, four-year-olds to the most, more older audiences, it's a great hands-on tool for storm, floodplain and stormwater. Urban renewal area program, those discussions for amending that for Phase 3 will be starting in July and again, we're not running an urban renewal area grant program this year, so we're able to delay that a little bit so we meet the deadline on November 1st still. Watershed management planning, again, your meeting's next week and then we'll follow up with that accordingly and then you'll be seeing shortly a revised approach to Kegley Branch Watershed Management.
Now, you're, they're changing the name, have you heard of that as well?
Yeah. Headwaters has now-
Headwaters got it.
Oh, wow, that's-
Quite different.
And expanding the number of jurisdictions therefore there are eligible to participate in the WMA. So it will be, first on your agenda when we bring this forward is rescinding your action to join the WMA for Kegley Branch and then the next will be the PONI agreement for the new name going.
And all it takes is two governmental entities to form that and we will get at least that to form.
Letters from, actually, Erica's chair, the board supervisor, should be going out later next week, we're having some problems finding the soil and water conservation district commissioners of the different, other different counties, the most reasonable, just an update of what the process is, what's happening. So just other items that aren't specifically in my work program, everyone got their headshots taken and now we're in the process of getting those uploaded to the internet and our website and all that, I'm not going to read through all this, I mean, that's obvious.
Yeah, we just, let's note that you say really, really busy.
I do, I have fun doing it too.
Something on the Maxwell playing.
It's kind of scale-mated right now, I'm waiting for, they went through and adopted the urban revitalization plan and urban renewal area plan and then they found that the zoning map that they had given me to create in GIS was actually erroneous, it had parcel zoned residential that weren't necessarily zone residential, so they had to clean that up. Just waiting now, just a simple update.
Okay, that's unfortunate because that's a community with a gangbusters going to develop, I mean, they wanted to build their community as wise to have been asked years ago, they're holding themselves back on that.
Well, I think they're still charging ahead, I really do, I think, latest I've heard is that they are charging ahead, it's just been working on getting those plans the right, with the right information.
All right, well, I wish I could have that.
I have a question about career fairs, okay, so you're going out with HR then or?
Yeah, or else helped out, see, I've been to two, three, I went to one last fall, two, three, three or four and, or, just we've been helping provide materials for people, either way.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Leanne, thanks.
She's got another slide.
Oh, sorry.
Couple more things, questions, sorry. No, you can leave it off because they have a copy. You've all met Matt, Matt's plate continues to get more full and the challenges of the videos is going to be what he's facing this afternoon. I did know when I put this together, I asked Alyssa if monies would be available for fall candidates so we could start doing that, there are monies available, now we're just in the conversation of who that individual may be or not, so. And then the question I do have for you, the reporting structure for me changes, I guess, in two weeks.
Yep.
Do you still want quarterly reports?
I definitely do.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just saying, I still want reports, I don't know if it has to be quarterly, it could be something less than quarterly, just depending on what's going on, I mean, I think we still need the reports, but just as not our direct report, I don't know that we need to see, we need to have this every three months, maybe it's every half year we need to have this, and what I would ask for is let the new reporting structure take hold, let Deb and Leanne talk through what from their perspective makes sense and then bring it back, so we'll leave it on the calendars quarterly right now, understanding that it might be worth a conversation to look at changing that, just with the way our meetings are progressing, I'm going to be really careful that we look at any areas we can to streamline.
Okay, I appreciate that, we'll leave it quarterly for now, as we all discuss what we need, I just find Leanne's plate so diverse and maybe it comes forward according to project or whatever, however we all work out.
Isn't it amazing that we didn't used to have this position?
I know, you are just, yes, I will admit, I express some concerns, I find that the list that she takes on is quite diverse and extensive and I'm surprised you have time for anything else and yet you do, so that's good.
Yeah, so let's just look for, as you guys get going, so we'll plan on doing the third quarter of May, late summer, early fall, but part of that update, Deb and Leanne, is to talk to us about what it looks like going forward from that with the new reporting structure.
Just then, just to wrap things up, you know, everything I was presenting, you saw it in writing, you said my plate's pretty full, I do want to note, there are some things that continue to go outside of the purview of the work program and one thing pretty exciting is where I bribe, I'm sitting on the- exciting is RIDE, I, like, sitting on the publicity committee and the chair of the MAPS subcommittee, I have to make sure I get that right.
Outstanding.
And that's been a, a fun project to be working on with all the antsy over at, um, CBB, and then strategic, strategic plan update, for some reason was not in the work program, but that definitely over the next few months will take some time, and I did get a request from the multi-age community, um, here at Nevada, multi-age is a, a track of, at the elementary school, it's either graded or multi-age, um, they're shared, shared first and second, third, fourth graders.
Okay.
For years, I've done Box City, um, event with them, and it's that time, actually, to do it again next year, they're planning for next year, so I did get a request from their, their staff lead that, um, I bring the Box City materials and bring it back to, back to them, so that would be next spring.
Would, help me a little bit more bring Box City.
Um, Box City is a really fun, fun event, it is, and then it requires an enormous amount of volunteer effort, and the school is always, um, very able to coordinate that volunteer effort, it is simply working with the school, the school children, um, I had, they're up in the penthouse, actually, bags of foam interlocking pieces that are different colors, that they lay on the ground, that they're representative of the zoning of whatever community is named, the students actually have a naming contest, the classes, and actually the local chamber will vote on the name, um, and then we collect boxes, different sized boxes that are scaled accordingly, working with the, the art program, too, um, they use milk cartons to build their own houses, so they each get issued a-
Is SimCity live for school to build?
Okay, okay, okay.
It's an absolute good-
And it is, it is such a tactile learning experience.
Okay, thank you, I just saw that one. Whatever happened to the project we discussed about applying for counties and cities, it was some national award we were looking at, and I'm sorry, I don't remember, but did we end up not making that?
We did not get it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we just found out, what, two weeks ago, we did not get the ISAC award as well.
We applied for multiple ISAC awards and we got shut out, a little disappointed by that.
Do you, oh, very important, next slide, sorry, that I can't get to anyway. No questions?
There it is, any questions for Leanne?
Not that I have an answer.
We actually done this time, Leanne?
Yes.
All right, good, nice job. Other than no other reports, public forum number two, opportunities for the members of the public that are left to come up and address us on any topic? See, no one, see, no one moving to the microphone to Aon's assignments, Marty.
Let's compliment the city of Nevada, Story County Medical Center for to reach an agreement on the sale and purchase of the clinic in Zirin, that came to pass in the last week, and it will be forward transfer title and possession, and is a win for all parties.
It's a good resolution to something that was of-
Very contentious time last year with a very contentious issue, and the city of Zirin had allocated funds, purchased property, and solicited a camp, a campaign to build their own facility, came to pass that it worked in both parties' interests to acquire the old facility, now the city of Zirin has the opportunity with the purchase of the ground, the dollars accrued to move in the direction of an EMS type facility that they had not otherwise, uh, looked to do, so stay tuned, they're doing great things up there. I was in attendance at the Nevada, uh, city council meeting last night, and you kind of came out that you'd been hustled out of Cambridge last night, or last Saturday, to go to a coffee in Nevada, you guys have been attending, and the city, or the, Brad Barker, the mayor of Nevada, complimented your presence, you added something to the conversation, did you enlighten me, I regret didn't do anything further, because you did it in an open meeting, but, I mean, obviously it would have worked out well.
Yeah, we've already-
Marty, you've been attending these things, too, where you get different attendance and they come out, but, I mean, it was nice to sit in a meeting where the city that we are making this effort as supervisors go to offer a, a narrative of the level of government we provide in Story County is used.
Sure, well, right, uh, and, and that's always a fun part of the conversation, is to talk about what the county's role is and is not, as we deal with issues within municipalities that sometimes go over, outside municipalities, and, uh, I think that part of the conversation that they're referring to is just some opportunities for us to partner, uh, and potentially partner in different ways going forward, and so I'm having conversations with staff now, and, and it will, it will come, it could come to us in the future, depending on how those conversations go. Uh, so, but, yeah, it's worth us participating in those.
We should, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Boris?
Uh, was it columns on Thursday, and last night, I went first to Maxwell and then to Slater on my one-person housing pilot.
Crusade is what we're called.
That's right, crusade, that works, okay.
House is crusade, right.
Presentation, uh, and some good initial feedback, I'm asking everyone to put their feedback in writing, I'm trying not to take too much time, but there's always a question or two of clarification on that. And then, um, on Friday morning, Dustin was there, we had a meeting at the chamber, Brenda Dryer and Drew Kemp, and also Dustin were there, and then Brooke Ramsey came up from Herta, and I was there, and we discussed where everyone was and trying to address workforce transportation, and out of that hour and 15-minute conversation, it turned out there is an ability to apply with, to the Iowa DOT for special project grants, and everybody got excited, especially Drew and Brenda, about possibly applying for a project grant that would help, um, fund a, basically, I suppose a pilot, you would call it, for transportation between Marshalltown and Ames, and so at that, I guess I didn't say much in the whole last, uh, half an hour or so, and Dustin, I think, was listening to, but, um, Deb, you'll be getting a call, if you haven't already, from Brooke, okay, to ask for some technical help, to figure out how we, how it would be built and supported based upon the asset model, or outside the asset model, but this would be funds to actually, for some of our employers who are looking for manufacturing, basically, but there are some other means, maybe transporting more shift workers, but actually running a shuttle, and the shuttle from between Boone and Ames, there was more discussion about that, so it was exciting to leave a meeting that was really, I thought, going to be just an exchange of kind of, I'm here, I'm there, what should we do next, to actually a plan for getting a project, um, uh, application for funding submitted by the end of July, so they'll be working hard.
It'll be worth it, it'll be interesting to hear how it ends up.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
Good, good, any else for us to take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All others, say aye.
Aye.